This hearing will now come to order. Mr. Christmas, you please call the next panel.
Ryan Boyer, Ben Connors, Tila Ahman, Daisy Cruz, Leila Bibi, please come forward.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sorry.
Just state your name for the record and please begin your testimony. How you doing this Bibi? Pretty good. Just state your name for the record and please begin your testimony and your title.
Daisy Cruz.
Hey Daisy.
Good day President Johnson and members of City Council. Can you guys hear me? Oh, that was it? I'm sorry.
There you go.
Good afternoon, Council President Johnson and City Council members. My name is Leila Bibi. I'm a council representative with the Eastern Atlantic States Regional Council of Carpenters.
Good afternoon, my name is Elaine McGuire. Good afternoon, I'm Council President and Council members. My name is Elaine McGuire. I am a member service rep for IBW Local 98.
Good afternoon, my name is Ryan N. Boyer. I'm the Business Manager of Labor's District Council of Philadelphia, Baltimore, and Greater Washington DC, as well as the Business Manager of the Philadelphia Building and Construction Trades Council.
And good afternoon, Council President Johnson and members of City Council. I'm Ben Connors, President CEO of the General Building Contractors Association of Greater Philadelphia.
Thank you. So when you get ready to get started, please begin your testimony. Whoever likes to go first.
Good afternoon, my name is Daisy Cruz. I'm with 32BJ SCIU. I'm the district leader for the Mid-Atlantic 1201 District, which includes the city of Philadelphia. Our union has over 20,000 members here in Pennsylvania with over 12,000 in Center City. Thousands of our 32BJ members work in Center City and travel into Center City every single day. Our members are cleaners, security officers, building engineers, and maintenance. Our members greet you at the door, clean and maintain buildings, and keep you safe every single day. 32BJ supports building the arena. Our members are watching market east in all of Center City lose business, lose tenants, and jobs. Jobs with labor standards that we fought hard to win. We want to bring business and jobs back into Center City as long as they're going to be good union jobs. These jobs will pay living wages, provide health insurance, and an opportunity to have a security, a secure retirement. A project of this magnitude will be a powerful job creator that the working class of the city of Philadelphia desperately needs. We cannot let this opportunity go anywhere else. Most of our members in Philadelphia are, were born and raised in Philly and are raising their families here in Philadelphia. Their livelihood and their families depend on the economic health of Center City. We have to rebuild Center City in a way that creates as many good jobs as possible. The arena cannot do, the arena can do that. We're excited that the arena will come at no cost to taxpayers. This is unheard of even when it comes to stadiums and arenas being built. While we want the stadium to be built, we also want to do everything we can to protect Chinatown. Not only is it a neighborhood, it's another economic hub that brings people into Center City, and it's a cultural hub that deserves investment and protection. The city and its leadership has the obligation to protect Chinatown. We agree that there should be more money put into the community benefits agreement, and we need to ensure that we get the best deal possible for the future of our city and its people. By investing in the arena, we can protect Chinatown, bring more people into Center City, protect family sustaining union jobs, and we need your support to make Philly as strong as it can be. Thank you.
Good afternoon again. My name is Leila Bibi, and I'm a council representative with the Eastern Atlantic States Regional Council of Carpenters. Today, I am offering testimony and support of 76 Place and urge our City Council members to support this project that will not only shape the future of our beloved Philadelphia, but it will also provide significant opportunities for our residents and workers. As a union carpenter and former apprentice, and also someone who was born and raised in Philadelphia, I know firsthand the importance of having projects in the pipeline and the positive impact good union jobs have on families growing our middle class. This project will generate thousands of union jobs during its construction and spur development on the long neglected Market East Corridor. Through programs like Everybody Builds, the 76ers have made a commitment to build a talent pipeline to diversify the trades and get more Philadelphians into our unions. The economic impact of this project does not end with construction jobs. 76 Place has made an unprecedented commitment to ensuring black and brown Philadelphians have access to the long-term employment opportunities at the arena, and through their economic opportunity plan, we ensure the diversity of the city of Philadelphia is reflected in the makeup of the arena's vendors, operators, and employees. As Mayor Parker has said, this project is a project for all of Philadelphia. The 76ers share in this vision and have committed to a $50 million community benefits agreement, which is the largest in the history of our city. This investment will not only help to jumpstart a broader city-led focus on Chinatown, strengthening this treasured community, but it will also provide citywide benefits from education to economic opportunity. This investment will help uplift communities across Philadelphia. The agreement between 76ers and the Parker administration will ensure that our hometown 76ers will continue to play in Philadelphia for at least another 30 years. This is not only a win for basketball fans like myself, but a win for our city as a whole because it is a long-term commitment to improving our city, our economy, and investing in our residents and neighbors. The 76ers are making this commitment without seeking city taxpayer money. Instead, the 76ers are financing the estimated $1.3 billion project entirely with private, with private funds. Supporting this project isn't just about building a new home for the 76ers, but rather is a signal to the world that Philadelphia is open for business and ready for large-scale investments into our communities, infrastructure, and our people. The immediate impacts of the project are clear, but let's not forget the long-lasting impact of 76 Place. 76 Place is projected to generate hundreds of millions of dollars in new tax revenues for both the city and the school district, boosting essential services for our residents. In short, between the Sixers' private investment and the new tax revenues this project will generate, this is the best financial deal the city has ever struck for an arena or stadium. It's a smart deal, and more importantly, it's the right deal. With commitments to expanding economic opportunity, investing in our young people most importantly, and supporting adjacent communities, this agreement will not just benefit our city's sports fans, but all of our Philadelphia residents and neighborhoods. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon once again. My name is Elaine McGuire. I've been an IBW member for over 25 years. Just to let you know that we are standing in support for the building of 76 Place. Philadelphia is one of only a handful of cities without a downtown arena. Cleveland, Houston, New York, Denver, Detroit not only have one, but they have three downtown arenas. The construction of 76 Place will generate 9,000 jobs for the building trades. Brothers and sisters, 9,000 jobs for the building trades. We go out and we recruit young people in the schools. We go out and do career fairs, and we're introducing them to the Philadelphia building trades. And now, as we introduce them to the Philadelphia building trades, we have to have these jobs where we can place them. We have pre-apprenticeship programs like Local 98 have a grant-funded Rosie's Girls, which is recruiting young girls in 11th and 12th grades to come into the trades. Now, if we are recruiting them, where are we going to send them? What jobs are we going to give them? What jobs are we going to introduce them to? 76 Place is an awesome opportunity for our young boys and girls in the city of Philadelphia to plant their seeds to show that they are part of Philadelphia landmark, to show that they put their hands in Philadelphia landmark. Me being a 25-year, a 25-year-plus member of IBW, I'm able to point at different landmarks in the city of Philadelphia to show that I helped build that, and that's what we need for our young people today. There will be diversity and inclusion in both the construction and the operational process of this 76 Place. The build and run of 76 Place will look like us, the people of this city, the city of brotherly love. The Convention Center also had opposition when they was getting built. I was on the Convention Center expansion for three years building that project. I was one of the main figures there on that project, and I made sure that it was diversity and inclusion, not only with IBW Local 98, but with all the trades. And that's why we still have to stand firm on believing that our people are good enough to do these builders. Our people are good enough to build these builders. These builders that we stand in, these buildings that we go visit, these buildings, our people, the union people are good enough to not only build it, but to work there. I'm sorry. I'm just passionate about what I do. I'm passionate about the city of Philadelphia. We have visitors that come to the city of Philadelphia, and we, and we need this arena. What's going to happen to the gallery, to the, well, I call it the gallery. That's what we called it back in the day. But what's going to happen to the fashion district if we do not build this arena? People will come, visitors will come. When there's a game, they'll come, they'll go visit the restaurants and the stores of Center City. We could bring Center City back alive again like it used to be. So that's why we need to build 76 Place. Now, am I closing? When I'm closing, I'm closing. They say preachers don't know how to land. I know how to land. So when I was at the Convention Center, I had the opportunity to meet there the late President and CEO, Amina Young, and she had told me, she said, "If you build it, watch it work." She said, "If you build it, watch the magic happen." And that's what we need to do. We need to build 76 Place and watch the magic happen. Thank you.
I'm glad I get to follow that. Well, good afternoon again. I'm Ben Connors, President CEO of the General Building Contractors Association. GBCA is proud to represent over 350 companies throughout the greater Philadelphia region. Our members specialize in union commercial, industrial, institutional construction, and our members are the contractors that have built this city and continue to build this city, something which we're immensely proud of. GBCA strongly supports the 76 Place Development Project. This arena presents the city with an opportunity to revitalize Market East Corridor, creating 12,000 new jobs, and as has been stated, 9,000 of which will be union construction jobs. In addition to the jobs, the project will generate over $1.5 billion in tax revenue for the school district of Philadelphia and the city. This once-in-a-generation investment in Philadelphia will create approximately $2.34 billion in total economic impact. $2.34 billion. Philadelphia, along with our schools and residents, cannot afford to pass up this moment. GBCA and our members are shaping both the Philadelphia skyline and the next generation of leaders. As a founding member of Everybody Builds, a nonprofit focused solely on diversifying Philadelphia's construction industry, we are confident that this project will create more opportunities to expand our diverse workforce. We are encouraged by Everybody Builds' approach of establishing a more collaborative model, working with multiple developers, contractors, and unions to create more sustainable pathways into construction. In partnership with our member companies and Everybody Builds, 76 Place will not only add more family sustaining job opportunities in union trades, but will also create opportunities for merging and diverse contractors. I'd like to also give credit where credit is due. 76ers were one of the key conveners that led the creation of Everybody Builds, and they continue to be a leader in that effort today. The union construction industry is unique in several key ways, particularly when it comes to career paths. It offers individuals. It stands out as one of the few sectors where a person can begin as a skilled trade person, and over time, if they choose, work their way up in leadership or ownership of a company. It's one of the few industries where that upward mobility is possible every day with every project. This potential for upward mobility is something that the largest poor city in America is in dire need of, and it's made possible when, when there's structures and opportunities inherent in large-scale, high-value projects like 76 Place. 76 Place represents more than just a boost for Philadelphia. It is an investment in our workforce, our city, and our future. We cannot afford to let this moment slip by. Together, we can build a stronger, more inclusive city for generations to come. GBCA strongly supports this project. We request that Council does as well. Thank you.
I'm Ryan Boyer, the proud business manager of over 30,000 construction workers in this area of the Philadelphia Building and Construction Trades Council. And I would like to first thank the Council President and Councilman Squilla for having us here and convening this very important testimony and hearing. This is about the future of our city. I started off this morning writing something, but I said, "No, I'm going to speak from the heart," because I need to look at the souls of the City Council members who have a very solemn duty to vote for what's best for the city of Philadelphia. And if we look at what's happened down at Athen Market for more than a generation, we know that we need investment, we need energy. It was just announced that a New York developer brought the Wanamaker Building out of foreclosure. What does that pretend? Do we have a Big Five and Below, as my councilman said, and nothing on the other end? Or do we have the courage to do what members in this body did almost 30 years ago, where I think the only councilperson here was O'Neill, when they voted for that Convention Center that she said, the original one? The expansion, I was proud board member when that happened. And I'm going to tell you what the Convention Center did. It brought back the hotels in Philadelphia. Hundreds of millions of dollars in hotel taxes. Our hospitality industry was saved. It created Visit Philadelphia. It created the Two for One Night. You remember those commercials? Get one and get a night free? And it created Light Fair, the biggest convention in Philadelphia. Over 17,000 registered conventioneers. And during those times, 900 tradesmen and women working in the Convention Center, but it doesn't stop there. What about the Reddington Terminal? Those businesses that are immediately adjacent? When we built Sixers Place, it makes us a prime competitor to the Javits Center, to not only expand that and expand across the street. We're talking about, is Philadelphia open for business? What signal does it send to all capital if we turn away $1.5 billion in private capital? And we can argue about the $50 million in the CBA all we want, but the reality is, if this doesn't happen, there will be no CBA, and the gentrification will happen in Chinatown, and we will have people getting shot like they did, and Jefferson Hospital may have to make different decisions about where they're going to build their towers at. So how are we going to house our sick? These are all, you are all very intelligent people. The problems that Chinatown has are real, but we can walk and chew gum at the same time. We could build the center. We did it. We could take the lessons that we learned from the expansion, the good and the bad. Is disruption going to happen? Yes. But we cannot allow us not to grow, because either you're growing or you're getting pushed behind. Right now, we're the sixth largest city. I don't want to be seventh, eighth, and ninth. These are the things that keep population in our city. Rosie talked about the jobs. The jobs are a given, but is, what is the soul of our city going to be? Are we going to have opportunity for everyone, or are we going to frustrate every opportunity because it isn't a perfect deal? Nothing's perfect. Let's not throw away the good trying to find the perfect. You are tasked to represent, yes, your districts, but what's good for the city? And nobody with a straight face can tell me that we have a bird, a bird in the hand beats one in the bush. The great Ben Franklin said that. We got $1.55 billion. Are we going to throw that away for if come? That hole has been in Athen Market for the last 30 years, and a lot of people had a lot of ideas, but they didn't have money that they wanted to put there. Now we have capital. Let's rally together, find a way to preserve the cultural heritage of Chinatown, put some of the protections that, this is the most progressive city council with home ownership preservation, period. The Loop, the UPA, all these things that you've done. We could do that again, but let's not think small. Let's think about the eyes of America is looking on us. In 2026, we're going to be a star in the show called America 250. It would be great to say to those companies and those corporations that's coming in, "Please relocate here because Philadelphia is open for business as long as you do the business right and correct, and we'll fix any problems that are real." Scepter, the best predictor of future behavior is past behavior. There's been no greater ally to scepter and funding than the Philadelphia building trades. When we go to get our highway funding from the state, we always put funding in there for mass transit, and we're going to do that again. Those are the, they're the conversations that we should be having, but we should be having them while we're building the stadium. And we should put that out so we can have a commercial so that the city representative can go out and say, "You bring your money here. This is a great place to be. We have an exciting new thing going on." This is the reality. The councilman said, "Keep it 100." Let's keep it 100. There will be no new office buildings built. We may have some ads and med spaces. If we build this and we attract income, we're going to attract apartments. More supply means downward pressure on pricing to help alleviate the affordable housing crisis. But doing nothing, you'll have people leaving, and your affordability crisis goes up. Thank you.
Thank you very much all for your testimony. We're going to open it up for comments from members of the committee. I just had a couple of questions. When I want to start with SCIU and Daisy, and I know we don't have a lot of work together. I introduced a bill this last week supporting Unite Here. And we know that the stadium is coming, but we want to make sure we support good-paying jobs, not only with 76ers Place, but all of the stadiums, right? And making sure that the concession stand workers get a prevailing wage as well as healthcare, because to provide good jobs, to provide jobs is good, but we want good-paying jobs, right? Not just poverty jobs. And so I just want on the record your position, SCIU's position in supporting our ally, Unite Here, as a part of this process.
SCIU is always in support of anybody raising wages and making sure, you know, I haven't personally had a conversation with Roseland, but definitely SCIU will be definitely behind with them to help them, you know, pass prevailing wage.
Thank you very much. Ben Connors, just had a follow-up question regarding, we know that this is going to be a massive project, right? And as compared to the great work that took place along the Convention Center, what is your organization doing to make sure that diverse companies, particularly African-American companies have the opportunity, women-owned companies have the opportunity, Latino-owned companies have the opportunity to not only be subs, be primes, and participating on this particular project to make sure that it's equity across the board for everybody? It's been my experience in doing this work my small time, the who's who and the usual suspects usually get a chance to participate, right? Ravis, the Turners of the world, the Gilbains of the world, those are usual suspects, and they have a right, but it's always been my passion, there's no secret in this room, that I'm always making sure that diverse and inclusive conversations take place where everybody can participate so we can erase the tale of two cities, because some parts are doing great, and I see trains going all through in the second council district and all across the city of Philadelphia. But if we're going to erase poverty, right? Everybody got to have a chance to have a seat at the table. So just give me the building and contract association perspective on that, and actually, what are you actually doing on this particular project to make sure everybody have a seat at the table?
So it's an excellent question, and look, the bottom line is if you want to have different results, you have to do things differently. One of the things that represents a departure from past efforts is that with organized labor in the building trades, Contractors Association, owners and developers, not only in this project, but other projects, came together to create an entity called Everybody Builds. And GBCA is a membership organization. We focus on contractor needs and our member needs. Everybody Builds is focused on the industry, and how do you diversify the industry, both from a support on the labor side, but also on the contractor basis? Build the capacity so that you can take on bigger projects. It takes a long time to have the capacity, the bonding capacity, and the assets to take on a big project, particularly one of this size. What Everybody Builds is doing is in conversation with 76ers, as well as minority contractors that are already in the space, but frankly, need to grow. And so, you know, it's taking time, but the time is now being spent, and the money is being spent, to try to provide wraparound services that will help contractors grow so it'll be available to take on more of a project like this. Now, between now and the end of this construction project, you know, I think you're going to see some of the same names, in part because you want to see people that have done the type of project before, but what I, what I would expect you to see is the partnerships are different, and that the partnerships are more meaningful, that the actual responsibility liabilities that are being taken on by minority contractors are going to be more, and that's what's going to grow. I mean, some of the successes of the past have been through projects like the Convention Center. Some of the successful minority contractors around today are because of efforts tied to that project. So a project of this scale is the best effort to give the runway a contractor needs to survive and even thrive, and I will say this is in the context of a down market when it comes to construction. So if you want companies to survive, you need to provide opportunities for them to build. That means a multi-year, billion-dollar-plus project gives you the runway to build the capacity to grow construction companies. So the combination of meaningful work, big projects, with entities like Everybody Builds focused on this, means that we keep our eye on the ball, and you see contractors grow through it. So we're optimistic, but you got to judge us on the results. It's not done yet. This is what's being done now.
Thank you very much, Ben. Ms. Bibi, and also young lady from IBW, I'm sorry. Say your name again? That passionate speech you gave.
Elaine.
Elaine. My labor leader, could you let Elaine sit at the table, please, sir? I just want to get an idea, and then I'll turn it over to, and before I turn it over to my members, and I'll listen to our leader of the Building Trades Board. Just give us an idea of the work that IBW is doing, the carpenters are doing, when it comes to providing pre-apprenticeship and apprenticeship opportunities, not only just for our young people, because a lot of times we talk about our young people, but also those who may be returning citizens, right? That want to have an opportunity to participate in a workforce that we believe that can be life-changing, right? We don't support ABC, so we support, right, the building trades, but I'm a strong advocate of making sure that that process is the
is diverse and inclusive, obviously represented by the U2. What are you going to be doing in terms of this project, right, to make sure that we're lowering barriers and obstacles for young people and just people in general have an opportunity to participate? Give me an example. I've been working on this with my team. Sometimes young people, they don't have a license. I told that's a barrier, right? Passing a test is always a barrier, right? And so give me an idea on what are we doing in this particular case, which you may already be doing just in general, to make it easier for our young people and people in general to participate and be a part of the trades.
Thank you, President Johnson. I just want to start off by saying, we have a pre-apprentice program, and our pre-apprentice program is not just geared towards any specific group. So it's not for, you know, high schoolers, it's not for youth, it's for anyone who is looking to take advantage of an opportunity that's going to better their life. As far as services, we talked about Everybody Builds. Everybody Builds has partnered with our pre-apprentice program, and they support us in a way where if we're not able to provide someone with a driver's license or, you know, driver's education, driving lessons, we're not able to do that. We have the ability to be able to train someone, to prepare them, to tutor them, to be able to pass our exams, to get them physically ready, to be capable, to be able to perform the work. But there are certain services that we're just not able to provide. Everybody Builds has stepped in and started to already support the people that are coming into our program to provide those services, to prepare them. We actually have the perfect combination of everything that we need to help someone, a Philadelphia resident, someone like myself, who 20 years ago had no idea what a union job, not a union job, but a union trade job was and how to get in it. And even when I figured out what it was, I still didn't know how to get in it. And even when I figured out how to get in it, it still took two years before I was able to. But fast forward 20 years, that's not the case now. We have the perfect combination of how to find them, because again, I lived my whole life in Philadelphia. You tell me what you need and what you're looking for, and I'm going to go out and find it for you. And anyone in this room or outside that I've had a conversation with, they know that that's always going to be my speech. I will find whatever it is that we're looking for, and I will bring them to the table. What we're lacking is the opportunity. This project in particular has potential to have someone who comes from wherever they come from, whether it's a reentry service, high school, or just someone who has had a bad route, to come in and not only start their apprenticeship, because again, the big deal is opportunity. Start the apprenticeship, a four-year, a five-year program, whatever it is, start their apprenticeship and actually get to the point of becoming a journey person, union trade person by the end of this project. So we don't have the issue where someone comes in and we have a nice job that's going to go on for a year, and they get to work, and then they get that first layoff check, and they don't know what to do because this is not where they come from. Or they can't afford to wait it out until the next job, the next job comes up. So they go to go work somewhere for less money, and there's, and there's less future opportunity. No opportunity for retirement, no opportunity for pension and annuity. All of these things are not provided. We have, we have the opportunity, we're staring at the opportunity for someone to come in fresh and green, starting over, and be able to complete an entire apprenticeship on this particular project, which will then not only better the person and their life for them and their family, but it also gives them the opportunity to become a homeowner. It gives them a wage to be able to become a homeowner, to stay within their city, to not rent or not have to live and commute back and forth, or just go relocate somewhere else because a better job opportunity was there. It gives the opportunity for people who are already residents of this city, to have a better career and to stay residents of this city and to make it better.
Thank you, Elaine. And also, you know, I just want to also be on the record in thanking you, Business Manager, Mangu Sanchez, for the work that y'all have done. I know y'all came out to Myers Recreation Center a variety of different times, working with our young people, introducing them to the trades. We've been out in the Northeast to y'all location. I think we all came together prior to, during the last, last year sometime, I remember, a couple of members went out a couple of times, but I'm just putting it on the record, right, at least what my expectations are. But we also know the work that y'all have been doing inside the community, and so just want to acknowledge that.
Okay, so IBW, we have something called...
Located in the second council medic district, that is. So, but go ahead.
IBW have Rosie's Girls, which is our pre-apprenticeship program.
Tell us more about Rosie's Girls. It's girls in the trades?
So Rosie's Girls is a pre-apprenticeship program for girls in 11th and 12th grades. We do take 10th graders as well. We get them from different schools all over the city, and they come into our, our training facility one day out the week for nine weeks. When they, when they graduate from our program, they have their OSHA-10 certification, first aid and CPR certification, basic knowledge of basic wiring, and they also leave with a set of tools. The wall is actually a partner in with that, so they supply all the tools that the young ladies need. And then if they're interested in coming into the trade, we go with them step by step on what they have to do in order to come into the trades, and they automatically get an interview. And so Rosie's Girls, this is our second year. We have two young ladies that came out of the program that's now first-year apprentices. We have three more that's in a class right now of 20, that's going to be taking their test come next year to come into the program as well. And then when we speak about barriers, the different barriers, like sometimes it's hard when people don't have their driver's license. So when these young ladies come in, we talk to them about getting their permits and then going on to get their driver's license. And also, IBW have, we have a caucus called the EWMC, which is Electrical Workers Minority Caucus, which I'm the president of. With that caucus as well, when we speak about barriers, we have on our, our, our members, we have Latino members, which when someone may come in that want to take the test, want to apply for a union, we'll get one of our EWMC members out to go translate or go to talk to that person if there's a language barrier. We have Asians as well, and if there's someone that's coming that wants to apply to the local that may have that language barrier, we have one of our members of the EWMC will go and help them with that. And also, EWMC, we do do, we go out to outreach. So we do a reentry with those that are re-entering into society, and we go to different homes, and we'll talk to them because there's, there's some that's in halfway houses, and we have members that was in, on that same road. And we have some of our EWMC members that, that were, you know, incarcerated at one time or another. And so they go out and they're the ones that, because we can't, I can't speak for someone that I don't have an experience with. And so we have people in our EWMC caucus that can go out and touch lives of different ones that's interested in coming, not only to be an electrician, but to come into any trade, and we'll go with them step by step on what trade is having that application, what do you have to do? We have, we have the electrical prep, which is teaching those, it's like a tutoring session where it helps you to get yourself prepared and ready to pass the electrical exam, because we don't want to see anyone get discouraged. We have people, we have, our application time is about 1,100 people apply to a slot of 60. And so, and that's...
You said 1,100 people apply for a spot of 60?
A slot of 60.
Let's say this project moves forward, I would assume that that slot of 60 will increase exponentially, correct?
Yeah, so, for instance, as, as the jobs go. So when we're in, when we are working, and right now, everything is moving, 76 Place will open that slot up widely. We can get apprentices, we can take on extra classes with apprentices, we can have apprentices come into 76 Place and finish out, like Lila was saying, do their whole apprenticeship in one facility. They can complete their whole apprenticeship in one facility. That's what 76 Place offers for anybody that's in the trades, whether they're carpenters or electricians or plumbers, whatever trade, they can actually complete their full apprenticeship right there at 76 Place. And that's why it's so important for us. It's not, it's not just, you know, the construction workers want to work, it's our future. You know, we're recruiting these young people, these young boys and girls, they're our future. I'm not going to have the opportunity to work at 76 Place, but I'm sure our future will. My son is a fourth-year apprentice, asks an electrician, and he just purchased his first house. I want him to be able to keep on going, to build things in the city of Philadelphia that he can point at and said, I had my hands in that. So it's just 76 Place, it's just, I just ask you, please just vote yes on 76 Place.
Member Jones?
I have to go to a prior meeting, but I have one request. Can the staff or title for take a picture of this? Because I don't think I ever saw this combination of folk ever agree on one thing.
Yes.
Ever. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Member Jones. Strange bedfellows. I looked at Ben Connors and the head of the building trades on the same panel, but yeah, I'll peep that. Mr. Boer, as, as the leader of the building trades, and obviously, these are two trades separate from a service unit right here, but there's a variety of different other trades that you all sort of leader of, that will be participating in this project. So just give us your perspective on how you're going to ensure, from a diversity, equity, inclusion standpoint, that young people, people just in general, have an opportunity to participate in such a transformative project moving forward. And also, from your perspective, what are the best practices? You've been a student of doing this work for a while, and what you saw on the convention center project, which was very transformative, that we would not do moving forward with this particular project, but also look at the best practices that will make this successful so everybody can also participate in the work that will take place as a result of 76 Place moving forward?
I think that we have, could you just come, just a little closer to the microphone? Yeah, I think we have two of the premier programs here. You heard about the carpenters program, CARP, and Rosie's Girls. In addition to that, we have WINK, Women in Non-Tрадitional Careers. They recruit women of all trades, and Aaron Hoffman was honored by this council here. We have the Sam State and Senior Pre-Aprenticeship Program as well. We have a full court blitz on making the trades more diversified. But someone said something to me earlier, like we always get the bad, but we've been here. The trades, while not as diversified as we could be, were more diverse than a whole lot of industries. We were in the high twenties, right? We need to go further, but we will continue to recruit from the school district of Philadelphia. We will continue our work with people coming out of incarceration, with Nomo and other community organizations that we have partnerships with. We get you wherever we find you. If you want to work hard, and I'm glad you said not young people, because not every young person wants to work in 100-degree weather and 10-degree weather, right? Sometimes they have to live a little life to do that. But that's the reality of construction work. So we take them wherever we can get them. The best practices, I think, if we look at the convention center expansion and Live Casino, it is happening here. Before we bifurcated the contractors from the unions, everyone has to be at the table to understand what the goal and the mission is. And you have to have someone like Built Right, Tony Wigglesworth Program, to put it all together, to say, okay, we made this commitment, this is the commitment that we made together, and together we must do it. Not the contractor pointing to the unions, the unions pointing to the contractor. We all are in this together. It's an industry, as Ben said. Everyone builds was to be that glue, to put the industry with the workers. All of those programs on North Broad Street, on every Thursday night, we have a licensed preparation program for the Sam State and Senior Pre-Aprenticeship Program. We do that. We partner with Temple University so they can understand complex math equations that are necessary for some of the mechanical trades testing. We prepare them. The only thing that's missing is the opportunity. And we will push and we help in the labors, put out something, Ben talked about the opportunity. We have a program called Lift, where we use our relationship with Yulico to make sure that new contractors that are signed with us have bonding and insurance that is commensurate, the pricing is commensurate with the average in the community and not high prices because you're new. And what's revolutionary about that? If they get a contract with an institutional anchor, and for this, we will consider the Sixers that, we consider University of Penn that, and obviously any government, that the labors will guarantee the loans that they get through Fulton Bank. So they get their money and their capital at a much lower rate for emerging contractors. This is already thought out. This is not haphazard. This group up here is in constant conversation about how do we move the needle so that we only have one Philadelphia, a united city? Because there is a tale of two Philadelphias, and we don't want that. But the only way we get that is if we create opportunity. We can't be nimby's, not in my backyard, people. You don't get growth that way. You get growth by being bold. And the future always benefits those that are bold.
Just before I turn it over to my members, one I want to thank you for particularly touching on the bonding and insurance. Always been an impediment for businesses to have an opportunity to participate on such jobs, even serving as sub, but even going from subs to primes. So thank you first and foremost for addressing that, and yes, as well, around the pre-apprenticeship and apprenticeship programs. Just can you make sure your team just give me and my team a list of all of them, right? Because we want to also make sure in the event that this does move forward, there's conversations around that we've had with the administration as well as the Sixers to be supportive of pre-apprenticeship and apprenticeship programs. That's totally separate from Everybody Builds. And last but not least, I'll just be remiss if I didn't just say publicly to Ryan Boer, who's the leader of the building trades movement, separate from this project just in general, we just applaud you just for your efforts in terms of making sure we're addressing equity and inclusion here in the city of Philadelphia, and also using job development as a way to address poverty in the city of Philadelphia. So we talk on a regular basis. This is not a, like, for show, right? Because we're out here in this arena, and in this hearing, but most, but based upon the work that we do day in and day out to transform. You're from Richard Allen, right? Couple blocks away from Chinatown. And you've seen the shadow of the area as a young man growing up, and be able to be in a position that you're in right now, able to address the issue and speak purpose, this pain when it comes to addressing the issue of poverty and folks that live in similar situations throughout the city of Philadelphia. Just want to acknowledge that from a public standpoint. At this time, I want to acknowledge my majority leader, who's been working day in and day out around all things labor. I think you probably know most of these folks because I think you've got a labor guide or something, and you're having these hearings or town halls every other week to try to get young people involved, and people in general. So to my majority leader, Catherine Gilmore-Rutgerson, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Council President, and thank each of you for being here today, and not just for today, but for your overall commitment to this work. You know that four years ago, we all worked together to pull together the city's first apprenticeship guidebook, and I just want to uplift that work and appreciate what you all do each and every day when we go out to visit middle schools and high schools and try to recruit as many young people as possible, getting on Facebook and on Instagram and just every single thing that's been done. I think it is just so apropos that it's also National Apprenticeship Week this week. So happy National Apprenticeship Week. We will be commemorating that week at our council session on Thursday, where we did work with Everybody Builds and WINK and some of our other partners at AFL-CIO to further uplift that work. I wanted to, to also just mention that we've worked with you all to support a CARP program that we love with the carpenters. And thank you, Leila and Mangu, and also the Samuel State and Senior Pre-Aprenticeship Program, as well as Rosie's Girls. I've been there a few times to visit with them, and also for YoACAP. I wanted to go back to the 9,000 construction jobs. So those jobs would be, I guess, pre-enduring construction, pre-to-get-prepared and enduring construction. during construction. Could you all just give us a breakdown for, like, each one of your trades, if you have it, of the jobs for each one?
It'd be hard to do that without the scope of work, Kathy. We don't have the scope of work. It's just anticipated by the amount of square footage versus the, you know, what normally happens. But you wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to give you that until we get the scope. And then we could be pretty accurate as to the amount of hours because the bids will come in, and we could be laser accurate on the amount of people that we need from each trade. But right now, that's probably a little premature.
Okay. And I only ask just to ensure that we were thinking about, as we always support other programs, how we think about preparing young people to get into the mechanical trades. And you had mentioned that earlier from a testing perspective. And that was one thing that we found over time, that we really had to provide extra and additional support for young people to make sure that they're prepared and ready for that. So that was the impetus for the question. And in addition to that, Leila talked about and Elaine expounded on the fact that some apprentices would be able to study their whole journey on one project, which is rare. I mean, you all know that's very, very rare. And so I don't know how far out you're planning, but if you could speak to, if this project is approved, how many additional classes for each one of the unions that you represent would this mean? As an example, let's just say you have two classes planned for 2027, one in the fall, one in the spring. If this project is approved, how many additional classes on top of what you already have planned?
Well, a project of this size, we don't plan apprenticeship classes for one project. It's the overall industry. So this, a project of this size, I would say, will probably double the amount of apprentice because it, because there's also a statutory limit of the amount of apprentice we could use. So you have to have four journey persons for every one apprentice, right? So we don't, I don't want to get here to mislead anyone that apprentice is going to lead this because no one wants that, right? Because apprentices mean that you're actually training. You're not the journey person. But a project of this size will usually double everyone's encasement, but if we get more, but we're not just looking at this project. I want to be very, very clear. We're looking at the ancillary development around it that we think we could probably 2X, 3X the amount of apprentice that's coming in because also we lose some through attrition. We're older workforce, so we need more. You've got the infrastructure bill with the stiff and all those things coming. So we look at that in a more global, holistic way, industry-wide. But this project is a significant project and to be a lynchpin to other projects. We look at this as a gateway project to open up that whole corridor on East Market Street. You know, there's some investment on the other side of the street that's probably north of $2 billion, you know, looking at a tower. So those things make, move what we're doing. And, you know, automation, we don't know the automation advances that they will make in the next four years. But we look to get more people because of retirements. The average age of the Philadelphia building trades is over 40, which is, we don't like that. We like it to be late 30s, early 40s, a little higher than that. So you'll see some retirements come, so you'll see spots naturally occur because of that. So we look at the uptick in apprentice anyway, but that project will probably 2X it or 3X it if we got, if we, good.
Okay, thank you. And then for GBC, I was going to ask if GBCA could chime in there and like how you all are working with Everybody Builds and the unions to ensure that, you know, your contractors, as we say, understand the assignment.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, I would say that there's been a, there's been a shift in the industry. And what we intend is that through investment like this, you're going to see it. There's been a shift in the industry. This is the first time where you have owners and developers, the heads of the building trades and contractors all come together saying the exact same thing, which is that the next 10-year needs to look different than the last 10 years. I mean, we went through, the last 10 years has been, for construction, has been a good 10 years of growth. And what we didn't see is a real change in the industry. And we believe part of that is because there hasn't been that, I think the word was glue, kind of connecting these dots. And we believe Everybody Builds can serve that pretty crucial role. And the other thing that I wanted to just piggyback off of what Ryan was saying is the demographic shift is happening in the industry. You're going to see retirees, retirements push forward. And if there are, and this is important, if there are opportunities to enter into the trades, which requires investments, requires projects of this scale and magnitude, you'll see what will be slow, then fast change in what the trades look like from an inclusion standpoint. And don't hold me to this number, but, you know, kind of a fast and rule for apprenticeship is about 20% of the workforce could be. So if you want to start doing math based on the projected number of, you could be 1,800 apprentices. So again, those type of things can, you can see. So if you have a billion-dollar project here, considering 9,000 jobs, what Ryan was talking about, $2 billion having across the street, then you can start to see an industry that changes very quickly. And in addition to the support that programs like Everybody Builds can provide for contractors that can scale their businesses, the other story that's very common in our industry is starting with the tools. So if you want to see more contractors from diverse backgrounds, then you need to see more people in the industry of diverse backgrounds. And over time, you see the contractor base change as well. So it can be both end. So both can be an intentional wraparound of support, bonding, insurance, trying to act at scale before you're at scale but do safely. And by bringing people in, as the demographics change for the industry, people that work with the tools eventually start their own business. That's always been the story of the industry. We think that will continue to be an important part of it. And this, this need for work, though, you can't do any of it without the work, which is stating the obvious, but we often expect results without having the raw material to get them. Raw material is having a project.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Chairman of Labor, Councilmember Jim Harity.
Thank you, Council President, colleagues. Thank you, everybody, for testifying. Ryan, thank you for testifying today. I myself am a proud member of Labor's Local 57. As most of you know, I say it every chance I get, very proud of that. Also proud of the fact that my son just graduated the apprentice program from Local 98. He actually just got an award the other night. I got in trouble for missing because I was out doing the people's work and couldn't make it. But can you tell me how the pre-apprentice program and apprentice programs will help with things like job training and skill development in ways like economic opportunity, workforce diversity, long-term career paths, and reduction in unemployment?
We at the Philadelphia Building Trades, and this without our cousins, the carpenters who need to come back home, we spend $48 million a year on training. $48 million a year. We take it very seriously. And when you learn a craft in the trade, Jimmy, you know this because the councilman said I can keep it 100. Economic development don't only happen on the job. It happens like me. A guy by the name of Joe Genovese told me, "I'm going to teach you how to feed your family for life." He told me how to frame a step and do concrete on the step at $100 a step. I bought my first house doing that, period. It was, yeah, I worked in the trades, but I also knew how to do that. So when they learned that the economic opportunity is endless, Ben talked about people starting businesses, starting with the trades. Outside of tech, the quickest-growing group of millionaires in this country are tradesmen and women, blue-collar millionaires. Look it up. It was the story in Politico about it. Because we need plumbers, we need sheet metal workers, we need electricians, we need carpenters, we definitely need laborers. So Jimmy, the economic benefit is endless. We do that 80% on our own. We have very little government grants. So it's training people to be the citizens that Ben Franklin intended when he started the public library system, a trained citizen. That's what we provide.
That's great, and that's good stuff. And I'll tell you, when I was in there, I took full advantage of some of that $48 million to get trained while I was up there. My wife used to laugh. I would go up for a week at a time at our training facility, and I would look up what took a week to get the certification for, and that's where I would go. I'd be up there all week. She would laugh. She's like, "You're taking a vacation after a vacation," you know? So, but this is just something good to hear about, and just wanted to make sure you got a chance to tell everyone about all the economic growth that's going to happen with this. Not like, as we said, not just with jobs, but with people starting businesses. You know, we're one of the only industries where, as you know, you can be an owner-operator, which saves you money.
Time's up, Jimmy.
Time's up, yeah, yeah. Lost my train of thought there, but that was pretty good. But, you know, the thing is that you can, being a member of the union and these apprentice jobs that are going to start, aren't just to make them, they're not just going to be able to have a job where they could support their family, and they will. They will have a job that they can support their family with, medical benefits, pension, annuity. It's a very good deal. But some of these apprentices that are working on these jobs will eventually become those contractors in the contractors group because of the way we do it. You know what I mean? We, a lot of other people would not allow you to be an owner-operator, which you know and I know, that means that you're a member of our union, you worked on a job, you were trained, now you want to become a contractor. So because you're trained and you're trained through us, we give you a little break on that. And we're going to have some of these people making businesses, and there's going to be some businesses that will take flight on this job, minority businesses, where people are going to be able to not only raise their family, but help other people raise their families. So I thank you for this work, and I know it's going to take a lot, and, you know, there's a lot of questions, but I believe we can get it done.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Councilmember Harity. And I echo my good friend from the IBW, please vote yes. And you'll show the economic impact, city wage taxes, there's just a myriad of great things to be had if we approve this project. A myriad, yeah, my man.
The chair recognizes a gentleman from the Northwest, Councilmember Phillips. Welcome back, sir.
You know, I had to handle some work for some school kids in the area, but it's good to be back. I just want to, I just want to tell you that, you know, I really admire the passion that was spilled out from IBW, then Ryan Borr. You hit a lot of great points today that really, really inspired me in more ways than one. But I just want to just ask a question for anyone on the panel to answer, but, you know, can you talk about, I don't think a lot of Philadelphians understand that there's a very serious issue here, whereas there's a history of sports arena owners moving from out of the city to, you know, to another place. Can you talk about how consequential and adverse the Sixers leaving Philadelphia and moving to potentially New Jersey would be for your industry?
It's not only our industry, it's a black eye for the city. You know, Detroit Pistons used to play in Auburn, Michigan. The New England Patriots don't play in Boston, they play an hour away. Just think about the national story. They tried to invest over $1 billion. We allowed them to leave. We collectively allowed them to leave, allowed that economic boom to leave from our city to go to another city, a peer city across the river, Camden. They stole the practice facility already. So they proved that they will, that they will leave because capital goes where it is invited. If you don't invite capital, it will leave. See Detroit, people thought that Detroit was all of that. And what brought it back? When Dan Gilbert put the arena back in Center City, and that revitalized Detroit, Michigan. We have to be students of history, not of the moment. Because when you make passionate decisions in the moment, they don't age well. But if you make good sober-minded decisions, they age very well. Remember, we have a solemn obligation here. Whether people clap, they yell, or they scream, we have to look inside of ourselves and say, "Is the city going to look better before I had it? Or am I facing a television commercial with dilapidated buildings and a dilapidated gallery in an unopened mall on Market Street saying, 'You could have did something about it, but they didn't, let's change them.'" Do we want to face that? Those are the decisions that you make when you say you want to represent this great city. It's not a game. This is serious stuff. Business can come in and they can leave. And we want to attract the business so we can grow. Do we want to make sure that they're good corporate citizens? Absolutely. I do it every day. Make sure that they pay a fair wage, and in this case, I like the, we at the Philadelphia Building Trades will support the complete prevailing wage for our brothers and sisters that unite here as well. We believe that. So hold them accountable, but you will have no community benefits agreement if we don't build it. And we are talking about fairy-tale dust, and we're like, "Well, we could do this with that place." They own it. They have the rights to it. You can't just take it from them. So it's either going to be nothing or something. It is a binary choice. Nothing or something. Let's have a serious conversation with the residents of Chinatown, the businesses of Chinatown, the businesses and the residents of Chinatown that are really affected. Not some of the astroturf, but the grassroots. And let's see that we can come to an agreement. And the best agreement is when everyone feels like they didn't get everything that they came to get.
Thank you. Finally, thank you. Finally, I just had a, just a quick follow-up question. For those Philadelphians who really may not be aware about how our task bracket works, or just, people are outside of Philadelphia, let's say that. How can you, in your experience with development over the years, can you talk about how your work and development has spurred not only economic growth for the city of Philadelphia, but also community growth to address some of the issues that people have been talking about, whether or not that be issues around schools, homelessness, as well as housing and so forth? Like, how has development spurred it, has spurred on growth in our city?
Directed to, sir.
Let me go with, I guess I can go with Everybody Builds. Let's do that, I'm sorry.
Well, so on behalf of the General Building Contractors Association, we're proud to be a partner of Everybody Builds. The construction industry in and of itself is an important economic driver for our region. So development is a necessary step to keep people working in this industry. So if you want to talk about the tens of thousands of people employed in the trades, the hundreds of businesses that pay... the hundreds of businesses that pay taxes for the city of Philadelphia and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, you know, the necessary element of all of that is to borrow what Ryan said, it's willing capital. So if, if we're saying, what's the downstream impact? It's that if you want to generate tax dollars, so it's estimated 1.5 billion dollars in tax revenue off of this, you want to generate that. And then the multiplier effect off of that, every, every job created has a multiplier effect and it's like 2.4 billion dollars in economic impact. You know, it, it takes investment, somebody willing to deploy capital, like is present here. Over time, it's going to employ people in the trades, it's going to employ businesses that pay taxes. And then it provides the resources that this body and the city of Philadelphia then deploys to see how the best to serve its citizenship. So, I mean, that's just how it works systematically. In addition to that, and I won't, I won't speak for the trades, but the trades do a lot of work in the community to directly impact and help people as well.
I would say that development, you don't have Northern Liberties if you had, didn't have a developer willing to do the BIAZA. I mean, we, look, Baker Square, let's take a community, Baker Square, Tasty Cake was going to mothball that. That became a development that we got the Crocs Center, which is, and now the Sixth Man Center. Now you have a whole ecosystem around there where people can get fresh fruits and vegetables from a grocery store that wasn't there and they can have recreation and salvation, all in the same thing because of development. There were some naysayers, oh, you build Baker Square, you're going to price us out. It all, it happens. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilman Jamie Glattier.
Thank you, Council President. First, thanks to all of you for being here and thank you for everything that you do for workers and for our city in general. And I was inspired as well by your testimony. I, I know that one of the attractive things about the arena proposal that we spent quite a lot of time talking about is the prospect of new jobs for Black and Brown people in our city. And it's especially attractive with us being the largest poor city. As you probably know, I represent a district that sees a lot of major development projects. I often have projects in the hundreds of millions of dollars, projects that hit the billion-dollar mark. But I have to be frank that while that should result in many lucrative job and contracting opportunities for Black and Brown people in my district, like the Council President mentioned earlier, I often observe the same old people doing the same old things on the construction sites. And, you know, we have situations where the owner demonstrates that they've made a quote, best faith effort and says that, you know, they couldn't find anybody, Black or Brown, to fulfill the job responsibilities. But I know with this proposal, we are all aligned on the point of wanting good jobs and good contracts for Black and Brown Philadelphians and we want to see those actual opportunities and not just a good faith effort. So I wanted to ask some questions about the job and training pipeline. If the arena moves forward, when will recruitment start? And considering the attrition that you talked about earlier and that naturally happens in training programs, how many people do you think that you will have to recruit and train to meet the EOP goals on the work site?
We, we are recruiting every day. Their jobs is to recruit every day. Recruitment never stops because we're agnostic to any project. Any project that we build, we want to build with diversity and inclusion in mind. And I don't want to say that it happens if you don't work at it. It doesn't happen by osmosis. You have to be intentional to make it happen because as the councilman said and Ben admitted, we have legacy contractors here who are comfortable with the status quo.
Yes.
We have to push them. It's okay. They're going to get pushed. Ben has been a great pusher at the GBCA, that it can't look like the same. You hear that? You've never heard that from a GBCA person before. The next 10 years can't look like the last 10 years. That is true, but it doesn't happen by happenstance, you have to make it happen. And the beginning is being here, understanding that we're deadly serious, that diversity and inclusion will be counted. You know how you do it? When they don't reach those numbers and they say they had the best faith effort, you have clauses in your contract that you can move on to the next bidder. That's how the hell you do it. You say you're kicked off the job, you didn't find them. You heard Leila testify that whatever they need, we've been in the city, we can find. That, that, that's not going to be excused under my watch anymore, that we couldn't find them. Where did you look?
Okay. I have one more question on the record.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Okay, cool. The EOP has goals for skilled workers, laborers and apprentices slash pre-apprentices. Can any of you talk about strategies for recruiting and training individuals for the different types of jobs that will be required to, to complete this project?
Well, our pre-apprenticeship program, Rosie's Girls, we do, we go to the different schools. Myself, Leila, we were always at schools. We're, actually, I have a lot to do for Apprentice Week as well. But we go to the different schools and we talk to the, everybody, anybody, you know, we let them know. I, just recently, yesterday, we were talking to parents as well and we introduced them to the different trades. If they come to me and they're looking for something different, I point them somewhere else. I point them to the insulators, I point them to the carpenters. So we work together so that, that we can fill all of those positions, all of those slots that needs to be filled as far as this new arena go, as well as even when, when Councilman Harity was asking about furthering career, you know, not just being a worker. And IBW, we have, we have career opportunities. So IBW, right now, once you complete your apprenticeship program, we have a partnership with Rowan University. So anyone that completes their apprenticeship program, Rowan University gives them 72 credits towards a college degree so that they can go into project management or project or construction management and things like that. But we're doing what we have to do so that we can, you know, we don't want anyone to just feel like, okay, once I become a carpenter, electrician, a plumber, that's it. That's not it. There's always more. There's always, you know, we, we break ceilings, you know, and we're known to be breaking some ceilings. And that's what we do here in the city of Philadelphia. So we have the pre-apprenticeship programs that's in play so that we can get those that want to go to different avenues, even Rosie's Girls. Rosie's Girls aren't just for electricians. We introduce them to all of the trades. That's our pre-apprenticeship. Sam State, they have an awesome apprenticeship, pre-apprenticeship program. And we have, I think it's three of their graduates that's with IBW and one of their females that's with IBW too, that I'm actually taking under my wing. So we, we're doing what we have to do. We're mentors. You know, not only once, you know, they come into our program, we're going to mentor them so that they can stay in our program. That's one of the things, retention. You know, and that's an issue with women in the trades is their retention. They're, once they get in a program, we got to figure out what do we have to do to keep them in a program? And that's our biggest goal and I've known Leila for, oh gosh, 20 years or so. We still 25 though.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Councilman Nicholas O'Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, afternoon to all the panelists here. As many of you know-
Member, can you speak into the microphone, please?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir.
And good afternoon to all the panelists that are here. As many of you know on this panel, the promise of jobs is not the same as what happens once the deal is done. The devil's in the details, as our senior member mentioned a few weeks back, and I'm concerned about the lack of credible details from the owners and developers for a number of reasons. First one, there's a vast difference between the estimated number of jobs by the developers and the newest estimates in the Economic Impact Study. In fact, the 76ers projections are 12 times larger than that of the Economic Impact Study. Two, the owners have promised living wage jobs and programs that would diversify the building trades, yet the proposed Economic Impact Plan only commits them to best and good faith efforts. The concern for us is that the Sixers' actual track record of working with diverse businesses, Sixers, including having minority vendors and suppliers, receiving only 6% of their total spending over the last year suggests that this project will only be a continuation of the long history of projects that gained the vital support of working people through promises that don't actually materialize in the end. Promises that only end up- Promises that only end up lining the pockets of billionaires and then we all end up paying the price. Little bait and switch. First question I wanted to ask for the trades or the contractors, what is the actual percentage, really the building trades? What is the actual percentage of building trades members that are Afro-American?
I said that earlier, 28%.
Thank you, sir. Have you had any conversations with the 76ers owners about why they've projected 12 times the number of jobs as the Economic Impact Study? And have they shared their original study with you and how they arrived at that 12,200?
I, I have not because I don't go with jobs off of impact studies. I go off the actual specs because we will know. That's what I told Catherine Gilmore Richardson. You know, men lie, women lie, numbers don't. And once the estimate has come and the costs come in, that's when you will know. There won't be any ambiguity in those numbers because those numbers will be fixed and permanent.
Council President, I heard the bill. Can I have, thank you. Thank you. Other question I had was, what, what would you add to the EOP to ensure that it cannot be violated?
What will I add to the EOP? I would add me. I was, I was, I was the head of diversity at the Pennsylvania Convention Center for that project and look at the numbers. Amina Young was the president, but as the board member, I was, I was tasked with making sure that the EOP was followed. And that was that, Live Casino. I was intimately involved with my councilman right there. It happened. Listen, I am not here as anyone should. I'm a 53-year-old man that don't have to be here. I'm here because I believe in this and I stake my reputation that if the 76ers don't do what they say they're going to do, then my reputation is ruined. And I'm not going to let nobody ruin the reputation of me or the Philadelphia Building Trades for anything.
Thank you, Council President. And thank you, Mr. Boyer, for that. I actually have some other questions, but I don't want to belabor the time. If, if this project were to happen in the existing South Philadelphia stadium complex with a number of jobs created remaining the same, would the change in location change your support for the project? We've heard a lot about protecting Chinatown and a recognition that Chinatown has not been dealt with rightly. So it's a hypothetical, but I am curious. Would that change in location actually change your support for the project?
I think this, this project isn't, isn't about an arena. It's about a resurrection of a neighborhood that needs the resurrecting. We need that corridor to work. You heard testimony of people losing their jobs in the fashion district, people that make 17, $18 an hour getting laid off because it doesn't work. Those people will be put back to work. The stadium district works because of the Eagles work. We still have the Flyers. We have everything. We can have both. And I'm not going to get in the middle between millionaires and deck of millionaires fighting over landlord tenant dispute. I'm not doing that.
This has kind of already been touched on and then I'll wrap up with this. The sister said you, you lived here, you can get folk no matter what. What commitments have you gained that these construction jobs actually will go to Philadelphia residents? It's just, are you saying that it's good work that you'll do to make sure that they ensure that? Or is there anything on paper? Like, what hard commitments are there there for that?
So when I gave my testimony and my comment, I spoke from two places. The first place I spoke from was a Philadelphia resident and a construction worker because I worked in the trades for 15 years. I'm now speaking, I also spoke as a business representative for my organization. So the way, what's different now, and we're talking a lot about what happened 10 years ago or what may happen on another project, what's different now is the people that you're having the conversations with, the people that are in position to make sure that when we do send out members to go to work, we have a say in what those members look like, where those members come from. And if we're talking about the difference of if we're supporting in a different place, I know the difference between if it's in Center City or if it's in New Jersey is not going to have much impact on our organizations because I'm sure with the electricians and everyone else in the building trades as well as the carpenters, majority of our members can get in a car and drive to New Jersey and go to work. They can get in a car and drive to Delaware and work on a construction site. What is going to change is the opportunity for the Philadelphia residents, for the Philadelphia businesses and for the, for the economy of the city of Philadelphia. It won't really affect us if it goes somewhere else.
Before I come calling Councilmember Nina Ma, just for the record, I do want to do a follow-up on what our tech team regarding the projection of construction jobs from the Sixers compared to the Economic Impact Study. Just for the record, just compare apples and oranges in terms of how we move forward as a body and just making sure that when we do the final vote, that we are on the same- What I think is, the study took full-time jobs. All construction jobs aren't full-time jobs. Some people may go in for a week, two, three weeks to do a pour and then they're gone. That, that, I believe the Sixers' study counted every job, be it full, part or partial. Mr. Boyer, that's cool. We just want to just get for the record, clarity from the owners and clarity from administration. It's all right. We just want to get, we just want to get clarity from the administration. I agree, because Councilmember O'Rourke wanted to know about the wild swing, which can be wild, but my notes were that they counted every job, including, you know, sometimes you come in, specialty contractors are not there that long. I had them break it down, just for the record, that's all. The chair recognizes Dr. Nina Ma.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you all on this panel for testifying, very powerful testimony. I'll just take the idea that Ryan Boyer put out of dreaming big, right? We are the sixth largest city in the country and, and that status can be slipping, is slipping because our population is going down. We are still considered the poorest big city in the top 10. So this is being agnostic to whether there's a project here or a project there, but the role of building trades specifically in addressing that poverty rate, that's what I'm really interested in. And so I heard a lot about all the ways you're reaching out, all the different programs, the build, everybody builds and the pre-apprenticeship, post, and the apprenticeship jobs and then the actual jobs. I just wondered, in your, if you look at a historical perspective, let's take the last five years or even seven years, how long have all these efforts been underway and what have we seen in impact of all of this excellent programming that has been happening to reach people? And I see people right on this panel talking about that. So that will give us a sense of going forward regardless of what projects we're talking about because that's what Mr. Boyer said. What is, how have we done and what are we looking to do and how real is that? That's one of the questions I have.
Well, we have to look at 2020 and 2021 as outliers because of COVID. 2023, we, we started most of these programs in 2023, end of 2022. I think that we've had numbers that I'm not prepared to talk to you about, but I will give you numbers. But, but I will say parenthetically that we've gone from about 24% to about 28.5% in the, in that amount of time. So we want to be in the 40s. We think that's a great place for us to land. That's our goal, but they've had impact. I mean, CARP program, which was not said, is the CARP program only take first-generation carpenters. So your grandfather, your uncle, no one in your family could have been a carpenter before. So it's creating new opportunities. Rosie's Girls and Wink, we're the best in the country at recruiting women construction workers. There is no one better than Philadelphia in doing that. There's no one focused like we are. And we believe that we can get to those numbers, but we believe they, they paid dividends. You don't get to 50% at Live Casino on the workforce if it hadn't, if the workforce wasn't there. And those aren't a phony 50% where we just put people on a job. They were people that-
They were people that actually worked, actually moved to another job.
Point of information, Leader Boyer.
A little more than 650?
It was 63%.
I didn't want to say that. I wanted you to say 63% workforce.
Yeah.
Workforce. That's what we do. When we make our commitments, we keep them. And guess what? Live Casino, they didn't leave. Labor's Local 332 represent the maintenance workers there who get a living wage with pension and benefits. These, these places, we don't intend on leaving once we build that. We have Unite Here, we have SEIU, and we have the trades that's going to maintain those buildings on an everyday basis. That's just what's going to happen. So it's not only those construction jobs, but it's also the permanent jobs that keep the facility running.
Second part to my question is the cultural competency in how we reach our communities in recruiting and so things like language access, things like understanding, different communities have different ways of approaching jobs and training. Do you have that built into your outreach to recruit? And what do those numbers look like outside of our black and white communities and the other communities? I'd like to know what sort of efforts additional because of the cultural competency bit that is built into your outreach?
I will say that our outreach is tailored to African American and Latinos. We've not done as well as in the Asian community as we probably should. That's a growing community. We also recruit from Eastern European people that's coming here from the war. So we, we have done a great job with, with those communities. Some of the smaller ethnic communities, not so much, I'm not going to lie, but we, we have bilingual throughout. Everyone builds and Dreena's a Latino running that. We have Latino instructors in, in each of our training schools that are bilingual. So the workforce in Philadelphia is mainly made up of the construction workforce, Latino, African American and white, so we focus on that. But if we get some subcultures and you have some ideas, we're willing to work. We've in the past with the convention center specifically, tried to work with the Asian community and it just, it did not work. But I also have a meeting planned with John Chen to try to get around that issue and try to address that issue, but it is a blind spot that we have and I can admit that.
I, I would be more than happy to connect with you in communities. There's a lot of poverty in many of the Asian sub-communities and we need to address that and jobs are the best way to address that. So whatever it takes, I think making sure this pie is big enough, we're not cutting the pie into smaller pieces, but we're enlarging the pie is something I look for, whatever the efforts result in, wherever they result in. So I, I appreciate that you're willing to make that commitment and as the only Asian American native of mine, Pacific Islander person on this council, it is my duty to make sure that I put that front and center. We're 8% of the population. It's not insignificant. And, and I think making sure there's that piece of the pie that reaches everyone is a serious concern, so thank you.
Thank you for your advocacy and you're willing to help. There is a need. We don't have the, the relationships that strong enough, but I will definitely have my team follow up with you.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you very much. I want to thank all of you for taking time out of your schedule and being here today. And again, Leader Boyer of the Building Trades, as always, continue to keep on doing a good work advocating on behalf of the people here in the city of Philadelphia, most in need in building this great city of Philadelphia. Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Councilman, I mean, I'm sorry, Councilman Rulandau.
Yeah, I thought my, I thought I was.
Yeah, it wasn't on, but go ahead.
My problem is to be quick. One, I want to thank all of you for your hard work in diversifying the building trades. It's a long time coming. It's a lot of hard work and I appreciate the work you're doing. Could you take one second to just break down the 9,000 jobs of which unions you believe or who's getting the most amount of work or where it's coming from? Thank you. Is it in there?
Your members are saying.
I can't, I can't break it down, but historically carpenters, it's usually the carpenters are the, the biggest part of the job, followed by labors and, and electricians depending upon the scope of work that we flip one and two. And then you plumbers and it goes down to the specialties, but those are the top ones.
Good question.
The carpenters are usually because they, they're, they're in on the framing and things and so the carpenters are always going to be the most populous and see that electric, the labors or the electricians depending on the size of the electrical packages and the like, and then it goes to the mechanicals from there. Okay? Thank you.
So Leila, we will be calling Mangu tomorrow and having a conversation with TJN folks about this product. Thank you. Thank you very much, y'all. Appreciate it. Next we have Scepter. Come on up, Scepter. Looking like it fits. It came deep.
Not for, oh, mine's low.
Yep, yep, okay. Got to look good on TV.
So we're going to jump right into this. Hello, how you doing today? Hey Wendy, how are you?
I'm good, and yourself?
Interim Director Scott. I'm going to start off this way. Before we get started though, we want to thank publicly Wendy Harvey Green for her representation of Scepter, all things Scepter. We know there's a new regime, Scott, and we get it. You know, we know your interim and turn to changing of leadership, right? We just want to be clear, Wendy's our person over there doing a good job representing Scepter. We pick up the phone when she call at all times of the night, making sure that we're advocating on behalf of Scepter. So that's what I acknowledge and give her her flowers publicly. All right, Wendy?
Thank you, Council President.
And I'm sure you'll hear that from other members when they get a chance to take the floor, but I like to start off and kind of set the tone. We appreciate you. But I would like to turn it, the microphone over to you. Introduce yourself and begin your testimony.
So good afternoon, Council President Johnson and members of City Council. I'm Wendy Green Harvey, Manager of Local and Community Affairs for Scepter. I'm joined today by Scott Sauer, the interim General Manager for Scepter, Liz Smith, Scepter's Chief of Staff, and Gretchen Weishardt, our Deputy General Counsel. We're here in response to the committee, to the council's invitation to give testimony about the package of ordinances and resolutions for the proposed development of 76 Place as the new arena for the Philadelphia 76ers. Now, before I begin, I want to express Scepter's sincere appreciation for the relationship we have developed over the years with Mayor Parker and her administration and with many members of this council. The city of Philadelphia has many champions for public transit. In the weeks and months leading up to these hearings, Scepter was privileged to meet with multiple, to meet multiple times with the administration and with many individual council members about this project. Scepter has been treated with great respect and again, we are grateful. We appreciate the opportunity to testify today because we are keenly aware of the council's commitment to a full and fair public discussion about this important project, which has the potential to be transformative for Philadelphia. We will offer no opinion about whether the project should or should not be approved. That's a policy decision best left to the mayor and this council. Our job is merely to provide you with facts about how the project would impact public transit in the city and region. At the conclusion of our testimony, we are happy to respond to your questions. With that, I'll pass it over to Scott Sauer.
Thank you, Wendy. Good afternoon, Council President, members of the committee whole. My name is Scott Sauer and I'm the interim General Manager of Scepter. I've served Scepter for 34 years, most recently as its Chief Operating Officer since 2022. Joining me this morning are Liz Smith, Scepter's Chief of Staff, and Gretchen Weishardt, Scepter's Deputy General Counsel. We're here to testify in connection with the package of ordinances for the redevelopment to create a new arena known as 76 Place. Want to thank you for the chance to testify. We at Scepter are excited for the opportunity that this project represents for our city and region as well as its potential to revitalize public transit as a preferred way to travel into Philadelphia. We've been asked to consider how 76 Place would impact public transit and specifically what it would take to meet the project's stated goal of achieving a 40% transit split. In other words, 40% of the patrons to this arena would travel by public transit. At the outset, I want to echo what Wendy just said. Scepter takes no position on whether the project should move forward. Our job is to consider its impact on transit during construction and thereafter on the daily transit operations for Scepter. There's no question that 76 Place presents transformational opportunities for East Market Street, but it also presents challenges for public transit, transit both during the construction of the arena and in providing the additional service that will be needed to handle the influx of inbound and outbound passengers that a new arena will bring to Center City. These impacts carry a significant cost to Scepter, only a fraction of which, less than 20%, would be covered by the expected increase in fare revenue. The reality is that Scepter simply cannot assume these new costs within the framework of its operating budget. As you know, Scepter is already confronting the reality of $153 million operating budget deficit in the current fiscal year. This deficit broadens to $240 million every year thereafter. This alone will have a devastating impact on the future of transit throughout the region unless we are successful in securing additional dedicated public transit funding. I want to pause here and offer thanks to Mayor Parker, her administration, and this council for your tireless support in the fight for additional transit funding. You've been true champions for transit and we're very appreciative for your leadership in securing an increase in city funding for Scepter operations in this year's budget. At the same time, Scepter has also proposed a package of fare hikes and potential service cuts, and we're also currently negotiating with two unions, including the Transport Workers Union Local 234 for new contracts. Unfortunately, these challenges make it clear that Scepter cannot shoulder the burden of expanded transit costs at 76 Place, which would be in addition to the existing fiscal challenges I just described. That said, we remain willing to work with the city and the team to identify new ways to reduce these impacts wherever we can. I'm going to turn it over to Liz Smith to walk through some more of our analysis and conclusions, including a brief summary of the key points of the 76 Place impact assessment conducted by Scepter, for Scepter by E-Consult Solutions.
Thank you, Scott. Good afternoon, President Johnson, Vice Chair Richardson, and members of the council. My name is Liz Smith and I am the Chief of Staff of Scepter. I'm going to pick up on Scott's comments and provide additional facts and context for your consideration. As Scott said, Scepter is excited for the opportunity that 76 Place could bring to the region and specifically to Center City. It has the potential to be a transformative development for both the city as well as for Scepter. But 76 Place also poses challenges as set forth in the impact assessment conducted for Scepter by E-Consult Solutions, which we have released publicly in conjunction with our testimony today. These challenges fall into three categories. First, construction of 76 Place could cause significant disruption for Scepter's Jefferson Station and will impose costs on Scepter that are not accounted for in the current plans. This is a large-scale, six-year construction project that would be built directly on top of Jefferson Station, which as you know, is one of the busiest transit stations in Philadelphia and the eastern end of the Center City commuter connection tunnel. During construction, Scepter anticipates the potential for delays in service and disruptions on the system, including the possibility of a partial or complete closure of Jefferson Station at times. As previously stated, construction of the arena means removing the current roof over half of Jefferson Station and replacing it with a portion of the arena structure. In addition, construction-related congestion could slow several high-frequency bus routes in Center City. These delays could result in increased cost to Scepter as well as drops in ridership that will decrease our revenue. Scepter will also incur increased personnel costs during construction related to handling these disruptions. E-Consult Solutions ran the numbers and found that Scepter's construction-related costs could total $20 million to $50 million over the six years of the construction process. Scepter is committed to working with the Sixers on strategies to keep those impacts towards the low end of that range, if at all possible. I would like to take a minute to respond to suggestions that the report relies on outdated facts and assumptions. We certainly acknowledge that the findings are based on the best information available and that things will change as we all learn more going forward and plans progress. But to be clear, the report relies on the proposed impacts to Jefferson Station that the 76ers have presented to Philadelphia Civic Design Review Committee. In fairness, the 76ers recently informed us that they may be able to make changes to the arena's design plans that would reduce the impacts on Jefferson Station during demolition and construction. Scepter's preliminary review of this new information indicates that it would not change the impacts in a meaningful way. That said, Scepter remains willing to work with the Sixers to revise the estimated impacts as more information about the design changes becomes available. Reduced construction impacts mean reduced disruptions for our passengers, which is a win for everyone. Second, everyone agrees that the success of the arena depends on achieving a 40% transit mode split among arena patrons. As a result, Scepter must increase service to handle the influx of riders as they come through our station. We estimate that we will need 20 additional trains every day on regional rail in the evening hours to handle the approximately 150 events that are anticipated every year at 76 Place, plus five additional buses on existing bus routes, together with additional manpower within the station itself. The E-Consult Solutions report estimates that the impact on daily operations will cost between 20 and $25 million annually. To be clear, this figure includes the impact of additional fare box revenue, which covers approximately 20% of the cost of additional service. While Scepter has provided service to the venues in South Philadelphia for the past several decades, this proposed location is unique as compared to the other arenas in Philadelphia. The Sixers estimate of a 40% transit split far exceeds the transit split for any other pro team in Philadelphia. The project envisions building an arena directly atop an active rail hub, which has never been attempted before in Philadelphia's history. The arena would be sited directly above that hub of 13 rail lines as opposed, as opposed to the sports complex, which is located at the end of a single subway line. This is a big difference because Scepter cannot stage trains in the middle of our regional rail network. In other words, at Jefferson Station as we can at NRG Station and the sports complex. Third and finally, there is the question of the impact of the look and feel of Jefferson Station. Again, we acknowledge that the developer recently informed us that it intends to reduce the design impact as originally proposed, but no one disputes that building the arena could change the look and feel of the station. Design matters, particularly for a facility that seeks a designation as world-class. Philadelphia is not the first city to confront these issues. We, here are some examples where a collaboration between the city, team, and transit agency resulted in a comprehensive transportation solution for an arena placed in a busy city center. In Seattle, the NHL's Kraken paid In Seattle, the NHL's Kraken paid for the renovation of what is now Climate Pledge Arena, which was completed in 2021. There, the developer agreed to pay approximately $40 million in direct payments to the city over the life of the project, creating a city transportation fund that supports transportation improvements in neighborhoods surrounding the arena. They also paid about $7 million to upgrade a monorail station near the arena. Closer to home, in 2021, UBS Arena at Belmont Park opened as the new home of the New York Islanders, and the team agreed to pay about $97 million towards the cost of a $105 million light rail station next to the arena. In San Francisco, Chase Center included an extensive package of transportation improvements and mitigation measures, such as a new light rail platform and increased bus and light rail service on event days, funded by a combination of sources, including local taxes, projected to be generated directly by the new arena, as well as developer contributions. And at Barclay Center in Brooklyn, which was built atop the Atlantic Avenue subway station, the developers party to a transit improvement agreement with the MTA in New York that calls for the developer to build a new subway station entrance, a new fare control area, access stairs, and other improvements. In each of these cities, transit was an integral consideration in the development of an arena and a vital element to the success of these projects. We can do the same thing in Philadelphia as well. SEPTA is committed to collaborating with the team and the city to make that happen here, and we have already made progress in working together. I want to be clear, however, that we are not here with an ask for city or council. We are not requesting funding for the specific dollar amounts we have provided on construction and operational impacts. Our purpose today has been to provide the facts and the numbers as we see them, based on the best information available, and to make it clear that the cost of these impacts cannot be borne by SEPTA. We think there is much to recommend Seventy-Six Place and what it potentially could mean for our city, our region, and the revitalization of public transit as an essential element of Philadelphia's future. And with your help, SEPTA stands ready to work with all partners to make the project a success for the riding public. I thank you for giving me the opportunity to testify, and I will now turn it over to Gretchen Weishardt to discuss the FTA approval process.
Thank you, Liz. Good afternoon, President Johnson, Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson, and Committee of the whole. My name is Gretchen Weishardt, and I am Deputy General Counsel at SEPTA. Each recipient of federal funding grants from the Federal Transit Administration is required to obtain FTA approval before any of the real property involved is modified by any arrangement that might adversely affect the federal interest. Jefferson Station was originally constructed-
Excuse me, Gretchen? I'm sorry. Could you speak more into the microphone so that the recorder can hear you?
Of course. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Oh, no, I have to figure out where I was. Here we go. Jefferson Station was originally constructed and later improved with federal funds provided to the city and SEPTA, which creates the federal interest that necessitates FTA review and approval. Seeking FTA approval occurs in a series of steps. SEPTA has already initiated the process of seeking approval by engaging the FTA in preliminary discussions regarding the applicable federal laws, regulations, and directives, planning a course of action, and considering potential impediments to completing the project review. Next, SEPTA must submit the terms and conditions to be agreed upon by all parties participating to ensure that the recipients and the developer do not commit themselves to propose terms that might be unacceptable to the FTA. And finally, FTA will formally review the proposal to ensure that all FTA requirements, terms, and conditions are met. In that formal review, FTA must determine that all eligibility criteria are satisfied, including economic benefits and transit benefits, including SEPTA's continuing control over the transit property to ensure that it continues to serve its originally authorized purpose. The E-Consult Solutions studies performed on SEPTA's behalf are a necessary component in the application for FTA approval, and it is also clear that SEPTA and the city must ensure that no harm will be done to the federal interest. In other words, that the everyday transit user's experience has not been degraded and that ridership is not detrimentally impacted. Late last month, SEPTA learned that the developer now believes it may be able to build the arena without having to install any support beams or columns within Jefferson Station, as was originally proposed. Assuming that the developer's new design proposal for Jefferson Station is feasible, it will still require FTA approval of the design changes. This concludes SEPTA's testimony. As both Scott and Liz said earlier, we are happy to answer your questions.
Thank you very much. Just a couple of questions before I turn over to my members. So the E-Consult, let's just go over the numbers real quick. The E-Consult numbers that I have in front of me, the packet that was sent out, says there's $32 million construction cost between 2026 and 2031. I know you said between 20 million and 50 million in construction costs. So just give me an idea about the wide range between 20 to 50. Is that like demolition as a part of the numbers, or where did the 20 to 50 million come from separate from what E-Consult has given to all of us?
Sure. So the $32 million that you have in the packet is an estimate of what the potential impacts could be. We're very early in the process. The design plans are still at a conceptual level, so we had to make a variety of assumptions to come up with that $32 million estimate. We looked at those assumptions that we made-
Assumptions?
Assumptions.
Like assuming?
Because we don't have a plan that shows exactly how the arena will be constructed at this time, but we have started meeting with the Sixers already. In fact, we met yesterday afternoon. They walked us through an initial concept of how they may be able to construct the arena around our station and our live tracks. And so the range really shows that it could be slightly cheaper than that $32 million, it could be more than that $32 million. As this progresses and the design plans and construction plans get more and more detailed and closer to complete, we're committed to updating that impact number each time they present us with new plans.
Thank you very much. And also for operational impact, I think you said another number that's not the same as here, which is $21 million operational impact. Would that be annually, I would think, to take care of the additional cost for additional ridership, correct?
Correct. That's an annual number. That's the cost of running service and staffing the station every year.
And how do we arrive to this number?
This is based upon the current frequency of trains that we have on regional rail around the time that the games or events at the arena would be ending. It's later in the evening, so between 9:00 and 11:00 p.m. We generally have trains every one to two hours at that time of night. That is not a frequency of service that will get people out of their cars and onto transit. We believe we need to provide service at least every 30 minutes. So that number is the addition of 20 additional trains to our schedule in the later evening hours that gets us to 30 minutes or better on our seven most heavily traveled lines, as well as the lines we feel will be most heavily traveled by Sixers attendees.
Okay. And then next, I know we talked about the 20 additional trains, five buses. I'm a lifelong South Philadelphian, so I grew up on SEPTA. I know some people say, can councilmembers like, you know, take a ride in SEPTA? But I grew up in SEPTA, right? So never had a car until like, you know, later years of my life, so it's nothing new to me, I think, and most of us who are in here. But nevertheless, I'm a big frequent fan of the Broad Street Line, because I'm from South Philadelphia. So will you be adding additional rail cars along the Broad Street Line, which wasn't mentioned, as well as, I'm assuming, because you said 20 additional regional rail lines? So what comes to my mind, because regional rail, that's like the suburbs, folks coming in. I'm thinking more about Broad Street Line and Market Frankfurt Line. Can we talk about if there will be additional, you know, cost from ridership and more rail cars along Market Frankfurt Line and Broad Street as a part of your estimates as well? Because that wasn't mentioned, that's all.
Right. So luckily, we have pretty good frequency still at that time of night on both Broad Street Line and Market Frankfurt Line, around trains every 10 minutes. And so when we looked at the number of folks that would be using the Market Frankfurt Line and the Broad Street Line, we feel at this point in time, based on the information that we have, that we have enough service and we have enough cars to be able to accommodate those patrons.
Glad you said that. And then give me an idea, when you have the Broad Street Run, right? I know that's on a Sunday, so not a whole lot going on. But I know you run trains more frequently during the Broad Street Run to accommodate the massive amount of individuals participating in the race. Who pays for that?
Do you want to take that, Scott?
So today, SEPTA covers the cost of any additional service that we put out for Broad Street Run and for other events down at the South Philadelphia Stadium Complex. Now, we have, in recent years, struck sponsorship deals to cover fares for people riding runners, specifically speaking the Broad Street Run, for runners to use the system free of charge. But that's something relatively new, just within the last, say, five to 10 years.
And as I just go through this process, just doing the analysis, why wouldn't Blue Cross be responsible for paying for the ridership, since they are the sponsor of the actual Broad Street Run as a private entity?
So as I said, the sponsorship typically comes from Independence Blue Cross. They sponsor the rides for their customers.
So they contribute toward-
They do contribute. Yes, they do.
All right. So I wanted to have it clear on the record in terms of comparing the two. And then also, Liz, you mentioned that, which is interesting information, that in other cities, there's already a partnership between the sports team and the transportation agency/entity. Give an example of those particular partnerships again, just for the record.
Sure. So in all of the examples that I had mentioned, which were Seattle, New York, San Francisco, and in Brooklyn, what we really saw in talking to them was a true partnership from the very outset of the idea of the arena was very critical to coming up with a successful transportation plan. It really took everyone being at the table, and the cities in those areas were also a crucial part of getting that transportation plan right.
Okay, awesome. In San Francisco, there's a partnership with the Chase Center that includes public transit event tickets, so anyone who buys a ticket to a game can automatically use that ticket for public transportation. Have any conversation like that happened with the Sixers?
Not as of yet. We would love to see something like that here in Philadelphia, where your Sixers ticket just becomes your SEPTA transit ticket. We actually have the technology to do so today, so it's not a far-fetched idea for us.
And I think that would alleviate some of the pressure of cars coming into the city. And I know earlier it was mentioned by the community from Chinatown in particular that traffic congestion and parking are key impediments to having a significant impact on that particular community. There's a variety of different other things I thought would be said, but what's said more than anything was the traffic and the actual parking. It didn't say really small business impact. They didn't really say, I mean, talked about gentrification in the housing, but what I do know was reiterated by John Chen at least two times, or maybe three times, was traffic impact as well as parking. And so anything alleviating that goes a long way in terms of if this project moved forward. And then the last part was, I know y'all are open dialogue and having conversations right now, and I know the Sixers, I think they were asked, I asked them to continue talking to you, and that we have to do a callback, do a callback and ask additional questions, as opposed to having them here today and then we doing rebuttals and going back and forth, which I don't think would actually be productive. But we do know y'all are having conversations regarding this particular proposal. The only other thing that I have is just that I know y'all are in dire straits in terms of, we want to make sure that TWU get a fair contract, to be quite frank, right? Because if there are no supported workers that are getting good wages and good healthcare, then SEPTA can't move forward, right? So that's one thing. But then also, we recognize that the state has a role to play as well, right? To step up and make sure they're supporting, which I believe is one of the best transportation agencies in the country. And then top with all of that, with making sure that this process is done in a fair way, in terms of a burden and having an impact on SEPTA. But I also recognize that you want to be fair in the process, and what's required of one should be required of all. So I'm just paying attention, and I do understand that, Liz, you mentioned that, well, down in South Philadelphia, we can make these decisions because it's not the same as operating in Center City. And I think that was mentioned by my colleague a few days ago to kind of show me the difference in the two. But I want to make sure, at least if you require one private entity to chip in and participate, because there's increased ridership, it should be fair across the board. But this additional information just plays a role to kind of put things in the focus. So thank you, Liz. With that being said, I am going to call on Councilmember Jamie Glatier.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you so much to your whole team for being here today, and thank you for everything that you do for the city and the region, even in tough, really tough times. I wanted to ask about the changes that you discussed making, having to make at Jefferson Station. Were you planning on making any of these changes to service at the station before the arena was proposed?
We don't have any formal plans to increase service on regional rail. What we do have is a very future-looking document that's called Reimagining Regional Rail, that looks at how we could increase service over the next 30 years on regional rail. However, that is currently unfunded in our budget, because we do not have additional operating dollars for it.
When were you planning to go ahead with those changes?
As soon as we can fund them.
Okay. Got you. So it's correct to say that, at this moment, the only reason that SEPTA would be incurring the extra cost that we talked about is to accommodate the arena and its accompanying traffic plan.
That is correct.
Okay, great. Can you talk about adding extra trains and buses, or is that just on game days, or would that be daily?
Do you want to take this one?
So the plan is to do it daily. And the challenge is our inability to be able to stage extra equipment on an as-needed basis, being in the center of the line. There's just no place to store extra equipment, so we put them out there on a regular basis, daily basis.
Okay. Thank you. Considering SEPTA is projecting cuts to the overall system, how will the financial or operational focus on Jefferson Station and the arena, or how could the potential financial and operational focus on Jefferson Station and the arena divert resources from other underserved neighborhoods? And how does that fit with SEPTA's model for delivering equitable connectivity and accessibility throughout Philadelphia?
So if we find ourselves in a situation in 2031 with the arena opening and no other method to fund this service, and basically being forced to fund it to support the 40%, our operating budget has to be balanced. So we would need to cut service elsewhere on the system to be able to provide this service.
Thanks. And lastly, do you have an opinion on who should cover these extra costs?
We do not. Our opinion is that it is not us.
That's a clear opinion. Thank you.
For the record, not us. In all seriousness, though, I have y'all, obviously, you're still having this conversation with the Sixers, and I would think that also because of the current financial conditions at SEPTA, there's conversations with the folks in Harrisburg, I would think, right? There's a $15 billion budget, and it's my thought, hopefully, to my friends in Harrisburg that we do work with, right, that there's a level of leadership that will address the SEPTA deficit that particularly has an impact on Black and Brown families with the same love of energy that we fix I-95, for the record. The chair recognizes Councilmember Jim Harity.
Council President, thank you. Hello, everybody. Good afternoon. I have three questions. I'm just going to ask them all three at one time, and then you can answer whatever you could get to, all right? So how is the loss of ridership during construction estimated, especially how it is possible to estimate things such as closure of tracks and platforms when construction details haven't actually been finalized yet? Two is, given the city has publicly stated that long-term street closures will not be allowed, why does SEPTA expect bus routes to be detoured? And regarding expected costs, since the E-Consult study indicates in a footnote that changes in the reconfiguration could reduce expected costs, what changes in SEPTA's assumptions would- would have the greatest impact in reducing the assumed cost? Did you get all that?
I think so. I'll answer the the middle one first on the long-term street closures. That was something that, again, without an actual construction and constructibility plan, we did not have access to that information until recently. We we were told by the Sixers last night or yesterday afternoon that they would be able to keep two lanes open on 10th and 11th Streets, which was music to our ears. So as long as that can be maintained, we'll certainly see less disruption on our bus lines during construction. I think for the other two questions, it would be prudent for us to bring E-Consult up since they did a lot of the detailed analysis for us, and they are here with us today.
Hi, I'm Peter Angelides, President of E-Consult.
Could you let Steve Muller know that his former student says unfair that he doesn't come himself and present to members of the council, sir?
I will let him know.
You can begin.
To answer the questions, the first was the loss of ridership during construction. How did we estimate that? And that's based on assumptions about how much delay would be caused, so the trains would run slower, they would take longer to get from one place to another. And there are, we just call it well-established methods in the literature about how increasing travel time, slowing things down, affects ridership. And so we just took those estimates of how much the delay would be caused, how much delay there was, and applied that to ridership, and that's the loss in ridership.
So these are all assumptions. So, yeah, and we all know the adage about assumptions, right? When you assume, you make a ass out of me and you, right?
I I would say they're estimates based on the best available information, using the best methods available to anybody.
And where did the information come from?
The ridership information comes from SEPTA, and the estimates of how things are impacted comes from the literature.
Beautiful. And regarding the expected costs, since the E-Consult study indicates in a footnote that changes in the reconfiguration could reduce expected costs, what changes in SEPTA's assumptions would have the greatest impact in reducing the assumed cost?
So the the largest impact, construction impact, is the delay in service disruption. And if the trains aren't delayed and they're not disrupted and and the station and platforms don't have to close in the way that we expect, that would significantly reduce the impact.
Okay. And then just one final question. So you said that during, they're going to be taking the top off, right? Correct? And they are going to put the top back on with the new stadium above it, correct? And they are paying for that cost, right? Okay, that's that's all I need. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Member Harity. The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Kathleen Gilmore-Richardson.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much, Council President, and thank you to SEPTA, not just for today, but for the work we've been able to do together regarding the bus revolution. Must give kudos to Leslie Richards for her her work and and her leadership and how we've been able to work together on that plan. So I'll start there and then go back to my other questions. With, if this process moves forward, how would bus revolution be impacted with the new schedule you must keep? I think you mentioned five additional buses.
Yeah, so they would be in addition to our schedule. One of the things that we've spent a lot of time working with the Sixers on is what happens on 10th and 11th Streets, not just during construction, but during operation, during an actual event, what stays open. We do have frequent bus routes in bus revolution on those streets. What we have worked with them so far on, and again, it's very early in the process, but they do believe there will be an ability to keep one lane of traffic open on each street during events, and that would allow, that would be open only to SEPTA vehicles as well as emergency vehicles.
And pardon me, you're referring to 10th and 11th Street?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you're saying one lane of traffic would be open?
Right, only during events. So this is just generally in the 30 minutes to an hour before an event, and in that hour after an event gets let out, where you get a crush of pedestrians coming out of the arena onto the surrounding streets. One of their original proposals was that 10th and 11th Streets would be temporarily shut down.
Oh, okay, so I see what you're saying, because I'm thinking that they're one-direction streets. So you're only going to get down there one way, you know, one lane?
Yep.
Okay.
But currently, so their original proposal was full closure. They've been able to change their proposal to one lane.
I I see, okay. And then very quickly, for my second question, the 40% ridership number that we've been discussing at length, does that number include the stadium workers?
That only includes arena patrons. We don't have any data on the arena workers. We have data from the Sixers on where their ticket holders live. What we would love to see happen for arena workers, both those that are employed directly by the arena or by any of their vendors, is for them to be included in our current Key Advantage program, where an employer will give all of their employees an all-access pass. We found that when they have that pass in their hands, they use SEPTA instead of getting in their car to travel to and from work. So that would be something we would like to see from the Sixers for the arena employees.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Madam Leader. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Rulandow.
Thank you, Council President. Another huge fan of SEPTA here. We appreciate you so much, and we want you to continue growing and thriving in our city. I don't think I missed this, but I want to ask this particular question. All assumptions are that we would need 40% of the people to take SEPTA in order to not have mass congestion on our streets. What if you don't get any additional funding and we have an increase of people taking SEPTA, but likely not the 40%? What does that look like for you guys? Can you handle this mass, what will be thousands more people coming to SEPTA without additional funding?
Again, are you talking about additional funding from the state for our current budget issues or additional funding for the service for the arena?
We're getting that current budget.
Okay, good.
We'll figure that out. Additional for the arena.
Right. So if we don't get additional funds to provide that additional service for the arena, you know, there's there's two options. I think the first option is we don't provide any additional service. We leave our regional rail frequency at one, you know, trains every one to two hours. We don't believe that we will get that 40% transit split without better frequency on those trains. So we believe that it would be likely that we would not hit the 40% number, and according to the city's own traffic impact study, that would cause gridlock in the areas around the arena. As I mentioned earlier, the other option for that is if we don't get funding for that service but feel that we have to fund it because of that potential gridlock, then we're balancing that by pulling service out of somewhere else.
Okay. And then can you describe what you were just saying again about the 10th and 11th Street? What was, what the newest expectation would be? I think I missed that.
Sure. So we've been meeting with the the Sixers and the administration for probably about the last year on this project. So one of the original points of discussion that we had with them was they had a proposal that primarily post-game. So what they've told us is that after a game ends or an event ends, about 75% of all of the folks in the stadium leave within 15 minutes. So it's a crush of people kind of coming out onto street level, and they're concerned about safety of pedestrians, making sure we have enough sidewalk width to accommodate them. So they had originally proposed closing 10th and 11th Streets between Market, I believe, and potentially all the way up to Arch, in order to make it a pedestrian-only area to get people away from the arena. Like I said, we, alongside with the city, have been able to work with them on walking that back a little bit and getting one lane for emergency vehicles and SEPTA vehicles on both streets.
And emergency and SEPTA only? No other cars on 10th and 11th?
Correct.
Interesting.
And that is accommodated within the traffic impact study that they've completed.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Lady. Chair recognizes Councilmember Ahmad.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you all for being here. Few questions. I I heard that what it'll cost you, but is there a positive revenue impact if everything were to go where you had everything paid for? On the rosiest of scenarios, what is the positive revenue impact for you?
Yes, so that $20 to $25 million that it would cost us to provide the additional service, that is net of additional revenue. So that includes a positive number in it of about $2.3 million annually in fare revenue.
So basically, it's really not beneficial to you?
It's always beneficial for SEPTA to have higher ridership numbers and more people on our system, but we are, we are heavily subsidized, and that model for transportation and transit is not going to change. So in order to be able to provide that service, we do need that subsidy from somewhere.
And what are your thoughts on that 40% split that we talked about? You've done this. This is your bread and butter. Is that a reasonable target, is, you know, to convert people to using transit? What are your thoughts on that?
We think it is. We did a detailed analysis of the ZIP codes that ticket holders live in and used our own internal model to see how likely would they be to take transit? How close is a station to them? What type of frequency on rail can we provide to them? And I think the game changer with this arena compared to the arenas in South Philly, there's a lot of folks that are ticket holders in the suburbs, for sure. Right now, they are driving to the arena in South Philadelphia because it's what we call a two-seat ride, meaning they have to take regional rail into Center City, they have to get up, and they have to transfer to the Broad Street Line. A lot of folks, except for maybe the four transit geeks here at this table, would prefer not to do that, and so they drive instead. The the potential that this arena location provides is all of those folks from the suburbs now have a one-seat ride. They are getting on at their local regional rail station, taking that train into Jefferson, and they do not even have to go outside to get to the arena. They'll have a direct connection. So that's a big shift. And then you still have all of our friends in the city that will be traveling to the arena that have a one-seat ride via Broad Street Line, Market Frankfurt Line. So it's a lot more people with one-seat rides, which tends to show a bigger ridership number.
Thank you. What is the, you mentioned the FTA and their role in actually giving a green light for this to happen at all. Can you explain what that looks like? And if we don't get it, that means, that means what?
Well, if we, so it, the FTA has to approve the plans, right? Any changes that are made to that federal investment, we have to show that it's a, it's a, it's a net benefit for transit, right? That we have satisfied our revenue criteria, we've satisfied, especially if it's being used for private development. And we have to show that we're preserving the property that was originally improved for transit use, preserved for the same use, right? So we we need to preserve it for that transit use. So we, they would review it, they would review all of the plans, and it's everything. It's not just the station, you know, the box itself, but it's the the easement that goes through the fashion district that gets to the station, right? That's a, that's a, was originally funded by an UMTA grant back in the 80s, right? To preserve transit access to the station. They have to review and approve plans to remove our new HVAC systems that we just replaced in 2000, or 2020, which were very expensive. So they have to approve any of those plans. If they don't approve it, then we would have to go back and talk to the developer and the city and try to figure out how we could make it feasible.
Because their centerpiece is using you as the mode to get there. So without that, so how do we know, like, how will a lease be signed without the FTA approval? Where is the sequence of things?
We are not a party to the lease, so I can't, I can't speak to that.
I know, but the lease is pretty much incumbent on that FTA approval. So I'm just trying to understand the timing of things, of how you, your, your FTA approval will feed into, I mean, the city should not go into a transaction without that, because 40% ridership is what is the linchpin in this, not creating traffic and all these other things we're talking about. So do you have a sense of how the timing would work? And we have a new administration coming in. So these are all things that we have to take into account in terms of timing, because timing is money. Time is money here. So I just wanted to know what that flow of things in any kind of construction project becomes critical.
So we we've had a long-term communication with the city and PIDC about how we incorporate getting that approval and SEPTA's approval before any demolition could be made, any demolition permits could be issued. We've talked about them including it in their documents. We have not seen that.
Neither have we.
I'll also add that the the work with FTA has already begun. So we have already had an initial meeting with them. We feel that that's a critical path for the project, and so does the administration and the developer in our discussions with them. So that's certainly going to be prioritized upfront.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Rourke.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to join the warm regards already lifted towards you all at SEPTA, but also for being here and taking the time to meet with myself and my team last week. Based on our conversations in last week's hearings with the administration and the Sixers, it's clear that there's a concerning lack of clarity, things that we don't have, Councilwoman Ahmad, surrounding SEPTA's vital role in 76th Place, living up to its lofty promises. So I want to actually start my questions there. Could you, and some of this was already touched on, but for my line of questioning, could you confirm for Council today, has SEPTA received a full engineering plan for the arena yet?
We have not.
Thank you. And what does that mean for your ability to plan for construction disruptions to service?
It is still, we don't have all the information that we need, but as of yesterday afternoon, we have begun those constructibility discussions with the developer, and they have provided us more detail, with a plan coming shortly.
Shortly, again. Okay, thank you. The few facts that are already established, however, illustrate the flaws with this proposal. I just want to run through a few quick questions with you. Currently, only 10 to 20% of fans utilize SEPTA when visiting the stadium complex. Is that correct?
Yes.
As it stands, the Sixers have committed only to providing a SEPTA fare for season ticket holders for the first year that the arena is open. However, the feasibility study stressed the importance of attaching a SEPTA fare to every ticket to meet the critical 40% ridership goal, which I think Council President also alluded to. What are some of the steps the Sixers would need to take to get ridership up to that level?
We think there's really three components that will get us to that 40%. Foundationally, it's the service. We have to have that 30-minute service. People aren't going to choose to get out of their cars and take transit if they have to wait over an hour for a train. The second piece of it is very much they have to feel safe and secure in the station. So we need a good station environment. We need a lot of staff down there. We would love to see amenities down there. The amenities that exist there today are actually not SEPTA's. So the Dunkin' Donuts, the old Philly Pretzel Factory, they are the fashion districts. So when that side of the mall is gone, all of our station amenities are gone as well. And then the last piece is we have to have one heck of a marketing plan. And so that includes lots of public information campaigns. Where can we include tickets as part of, you know, a package or to a season ticket holder? How do we get Key Advantage for all of the employees? You need all three of those things to hit that 40%.
Okay. And and I'm done. And to your knowledge, has the, have the Sixers made any commitments to taking any of those steps?
Not yet.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I, you know, I just want to piggyback following, you know, to follow up on Councilman O'Rourke's comments that, you know, as we stated last week, it's incredibly disappointing and disturbing, I think, that we don't have the the level of detail that I think that we should have at this point, and to know that SEPTA doesn't have what it needs, it's it's quite troubling. With that being said, Chair recognizes Councilman Phillips.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bass. Thank you, Councilwoman Bass. The question I have is just, is around SEPTA and its future with the arena. And the arena is going to be constructed in about, over the next six years. Right now, SEPTA is in a bad and tight position. Do you foresee you, as SEPTA continues to grow and get out of this circumstance, does that make this a more positive thing for you all in the work on for the future, considering the fact that you did say that this could be a revenue boost for you all? So, you know, do you foresee this being something that you just can't afford forever or just right now?
So all of the funding solutions that we're working with this group, with the city, with the state on right now, that does not get us to a budget number that would be able to include this $20 to $25 million in additional service. So even if we get the full ask from the state, that does not give us extra budget for any of these additional service numbers.
Right. And so the question that I have is, if this is a certain revenue boost for SEPTA, as a business model, wouldn't you try to work really earnestly to figure out how to make this work as opposed to coming in with a deficit model?
So in order to get that revenue boost, that $2.3 million in additional revenue, we have to spend $25 million. So this will never be a money-making endeavor for SEPTA. We unfortunately don't have lots of avenues to boost revenue. This is not one of them. There's lots of other opportunities for us with this project, and obviously, we are very invested in the future of Market East. Our offices are right at 12th and Market, so we see what's going on every day. But this will not be a project that produces more revenue than what the necessary service costs us.
But if I heard correctly earlier, you said that if this was built, if you were able to get the subsidy of the $20 million or so, it would bring in $2.5 million annually. So that is a revenue boost in the event that you're able to get that particular subsidy.
Absolutely. We will take that subsidy from wherever we can find it, and we are committed to working alongside the city and the team to seek out those funding solutions. We just want to be clear today that it can't be funded out of our own budget.
That's what I'm saying. So right now, it's not operationally sound to do that. But I'm asking that in five years from now, if the money, if SEPTA is able to work with the state, this may be possible, you know, beyond that. Have you seen, foreseen what these look like five years from now?
Correct. If we have an overall budget solution and a subsidy for this additional service, that will put us in good shape to be able to provide it.
Thank you. I just, I just want us to think about how SEPTA should think about being on the cups of figuring out, how do we get out of this situation now, but also have the vision to think about, how do we make future revenue work for the city and be in a positive light? Like, okay, we need to figure out how to do this and this all at the same time. All right. Thank you, Chair. Chairman. Chairwoman.
Thank you, Councilman Phillips. And that being said, there are, if there are no other questions from, Chair recognizes Councilman Driscoll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, leadership of SEPTA. I know it's a stressful time for the leadership and your members and TWU, and, you know, I think we all work together, we'll get through this. It's, you know, that three-legged stool that we talk about, SEPTA, the state, the city, all working together. I mean, I spent many years in the General Assembly, as did Council President and Mayor Parker, advocating for the advantages of fully funding the Southeast Region. It's not only an economic engine for the Southeast, but truly the revenues that are generated from the hard-working men and women that take SEPTA, that those tax dollars then go to the Commonwealth, that sometimes our friends across the Commonwealth don't quite get. My hope, as Council President stated, is that the new General Assembly, when they get sworn in the first Tuesday in January, they get to work, they roll up their sleeves. Governor Shapiro gets creative with the funding surpluses that we have up there to make sure not only, outside of what we're talking about today, that you get what you need to do the right thing for the city of Philadelphia and the Southeast Region. So having said all that, I just want to get a couple of questions on the record because it's important, as you see, most of the members here, we all come from a different perspective. We all have a constituency here. We all want to get it right. And before we take this big vote, we want to make sure that every question that we can think of is on the record. So real briefly, how does the expected passenger volume at Jefferson Station post-event compare to the current evening rush hour? And then related, has SEPTA estimated how many passengers would use the BSL or MFL if less service or no additional regional rail service was provided at Jefferson?
We're going to answer this together, Scott. All right. So our current model shows that for the arena, we would have about 3,200 additional passengers per event.
3,200?
3,200 per event.
Per event.
On regional rail. And Scott, maybe you can give some more context on how that might compare to a traditional evening peak.
Sure. So, so today, so keep in mind, however, this is 3,200 passengers within a span of about 15 to 20 minutes. So the, our typical passenger levels are not coming in in that number. They're trickling in. So they're typically arriving anywhere from, say, five to 15 minutes prior to their train's arrival. So on a typical, on a typical evening rush, you'll see in any given 15-minute period, you might see, say, anywhere from, say, several hundred to, at the most, maybe 1,000 people in the station. And then they're going to vacate within 15 minutes, and they'll be replaced by, say, another hundred, several hundred to 1,000. And that just cycles through over the course of about two to three hours. You take that same 1,000 people, and now in a span of 15 minutes, we introduce another 3,200. This causes us to have to manage that crowd differently, where we are going to meter the number of people who can enter the station, enter the platform, manage it in such a way that we can create a safe environment where people are able to get down the steps, onto a train, a little at a time, so we make sure we manage that properly.
Okay. Well, the way the Sixers are playing now, they'll be leaving early, they'll be leaving the game early. But that's another, that's for another day. And what would be involved in altering the schedule of the existing regional rail train serving Jefferson Station after 9:00 PM to arrive 20 to 30 minutes later to serve the post-event travel?
That's those additional 20 trains that we would need to add to the schedule. I think we touched on it a little bit earlier. The challenge we have at providing this type of service at this station is that the events don't end at a consistent end time. So we don't know that the Sixers game is always going to be over at 9:45. So as we're trying to set up our regional rail schedules, they have to be a timed schedule. So we just need to provide that consistent service every 30 minutes to cover a game that maybe a lot of people do leave early compared to a game that has overtime periods. The way we do this now at NRG is we're able to store all of those extra trains, and we just wait to release them until the game is over. We can't do that at Jefferson because of the way that it's set up.
All right. And just lastly, just for the record, what's the capacity for additional passengers if it was just existing trains after 9:30?
We would have to do those.
If no additional service was provided, what are we talking about there?
We, we would, we can get that answer to you, to make sure that we would have capacity on existing trains for passengers. We didn't look at it that way because if we don't have those extra trains, we do feel very strongly that people aren't going to take regional rail.
And I don't disagree. Yeah, I think people want to get where they're going, you know, and immediately. I get that.
I would also say that at that time of the evening, between 9:00 and 11:00 PM, we're running smaller trains, two cars generally. So we're not, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have capacity to introduce on a line, say, an additional 400 or 500 people per train without, without pre-planning and having the additional cars and crew and the folks to manage it.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, on transportation. Just want to go back, as we just wrap up. Earlier, you mentioned that regarding the Broad Street Run, you talked about how Blue Cross sponsors SEPTA fares to kind of mitigate the impact of the increase in operational ridership, right? And you also mentioned that those fares cover about 20% of operational costs, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So a Blue Cross, which pretty much private company hosting the event, they want to subsidize 20% of the fares, where does the 80% of the operational cost come from that? Does that come from SEPTA's budget? Or how do you come up with the other costs to pay for the increase in ridership and operation?
That comes from SEPTA's budget, SEPTA's operating budget.
So that comes from SEPTA's operating budget?
Yes, it does.
So it'd be fair to say, in the event that this does move forward, and let's say the Sixers decide to engage in something similar, where they're providing a ticket and slash, I still call them transpasses, I don't know what they call it today, right? To kind of help mitigate the cost and impact on SEPTA's operational cost, would that be something that would be, I would think, helpful in terms of your overall operational cost?
I mean, certainly, any subsidy we receive is helpful. However, there's several very fundamental differences in the way we run subway service as opposed to regional rail service. We have about 1,000 staff that are dedicated full-time every single day to running subway service. Those are train operators, cashiers, custodians, managers. And on a big event that we, whether it's the Broad Street Run or South Philadelphia Stadium Event, we draw from those 1,000 people, and we can redeploy them as needed. A regional rail operation does not, does not function like that because we don't see those kinds of events happen with the regularity we see on the Broad Street Line or the Market Frankfurt Line, where we can draw from existing staff. We would be creating a whole new staff of people to work events that involve large-scale changes to our regional rail operation.
And I would think, and just as I wrap up, before we go to our next panel, and in terms of the regional rails, just give us an idea, where are, what counties are they drawing from? Who rides the regional rails, and where are they coming from?
So certainly, our regional rail expands the entire region, so it's certainly not just Philadelphia. But all five counties, we extend service into New Jersey and Delaware. I don't have the demographic breakdown of where customers come from.
Just want to get an idea, like, obviously, if a game takes place, then you're going to have people coming from Bucks, people coming, using the Paco line, coming from Jersey, people coming from Chester, people coming from Montgomery County. Like, I just want to get an idea from that aspect, that's all.
Yeah. Based upon the ticket data that we have, they are coming from the entire region. I do want to be clear, there are a lot of folks coming from Philadelphia as well. We just have existing service that is in place in the later evenings today that can accommodate them. So we're looking at, you know, about 3,200 on regional rail from all five counties, 1,000 on Paco, 100 on New Jersey Transit buses, and then the bulk of the rest coming from Philadelphia on the Market Frankfurt, Market Frankfurt Line, Broad Street Line buses.
Can you say those numbers again?
Sure. 3,200 on regional rail, 1,000 on Paco, about 100 on New Jersey Transit buses, and then the rest of the patrons would be coming on subway, trolleys, buses. And there's a table in the Economic Impact Study that we released today that breaks that all down as well.
Okay. Did you send it to members of council, because all I had is what I receive.
We can send it.
Regarding construction and operational cost. Yeah, please send that over.
Yeah.
I don't have any other questions or comments. Members of the committee, have any other questions or comments? Listen, we thank all of you for taking time out of your schedule, being here. Scott, good luck as interim director. Wendy?
Yes, Council President, I just wanted to acknowledge, you know, we talked about a number of things here today, especially our funding, and we want to, again, express appreciation for the press conference you had with our board chair, Councilman Driscoll, Councilman Young, Councilman Scola, very recently, about supporting SEPTA and mass transit funding and a long-term solution that is much sorely needed. So thank you again for that.
Well, thank you. And I'm never shy to say, when I served as chairman of transportation, SEPTA received the award so many years ago to be the number-one transportation agency in the country. And so we do know what SEPTA represents to our region, and the issue that we're dealing with around the funding is not a Philadelphia issue. It's a five-county surrounding region issue, and everybody needs to be at the table trying to make sure that we really don't go off a fiscal cliff. And for me, it's critically important because people who use SEPTA are primarily, and it's for everybody, but, you know, a lot of poor, black and brown people, children using it for school, day in, day out, seniors going to and from the doctor on a day-to-day basis. So even separate from the arena, we just thank all of you for being on the front line and making sure we're moving our region forward. With that being said, well, Mr. John Christens, please call up the next esteemed panel.
Reverend Felton, Lonnie Herndon, Jonathan Mason, Pastor Carl Day, please come forward.
So it is truly, I'm honored to have this opportunity to hear from this particular panel, I've had the opportunity to note all of you, and I know the work that you have done. And so with that being said, just state your name for the record, and please begin your testimony.
Man, good evening. First and foremost, thank you all for having us. I want to shout out my young men that are still here. They stuck this thing through today. So I'm Pastor Carl Day, culture-changing Christians, advocate, you know, advocate activist here in the violence prevention space. I advocate on behalf of young black brothers. One of the things that Councilwoman Ketsi Lazada said that really stuck with me last week was, you know, how she was a proud Latina, and she really advocated for her community to definitely not be left out of conversations. She spoke about, you know, what about Latinos? And I respect her for that. Also, I want to state that I respect every last Asian person from Chinatown that wanted to advocate for their people from their community. But I also want to stay here. I stand here as a black man in Philadelphia, here to speak on behalf of black men in Philadelphia. And one of the common things that I've happened to see today, and throughout the entirety of these past few weeks and past few months, was the very same problem that plagued us while somebody brought up earlier this election, is the fact that young black men in Philadelphia and cities widespread throughout America come last. I sit here, I've heard about various demographics of other people, LGBT, I heard about this, I heard about that, and I hear about all I heard about that, and I hear about a lot of the what-about-isms and the what-if games, and nobody's talking about the severity. We hear one D-word keep being thrown around, displacement. Nobody's talking about the real D-word that I deal with daily, and these young brothers deal with, and that's death. We can talk about what could potentially happen years from now, we can play the what-if game, we're not talking about decline, which is the African-American population, we're not talking about the black men who find themselves in jails, we're not talking about the young black brothers who literally are seeking those opportunities. So, here today, I'm not, I'm not only here pro-Arena, I'm pro-opportunity. These young black brothers that I take care of, that I feed, who I get employed, who I employ myself, who we create programming for citywide, these young black brothers that people who profess and pretend to literally care when they mask it and guise it in the stunt, in the terms of public safety, coded AKA black men, I'm hearing a lack of imagination, the lack of vision, when we talk about what does public safety look like in 2030, adding more police. Yeah, that's the same lack of innovation, that's the same, watching my tongue, so, that is the same level of lack of ingenuity that has crippled this city, this entire Democratic Party? Plus, when I'm hearing people fear monger folks into what happens when potential displacement happens, when the vast majority of African-Americans in this city, who is still the majority, have already been displaced. There is no other place to build this thing. And when people sit here and try to use their imaginations, and we've heard people mention things today about what would you do with another $1 billion of what can happen in a place? These are Penn scholars, by the way, they suggest build luxury apartments and spend $1 billion on real estate. Those things don't benefit black men. Those things don't help feed black families. I'm hearing, I'm hearing questions, I'm hearing questions about the potential protections of community members because an arena comes down into town, by people who haven't lived in this city. I'm hearing people talk about how lively Center City is, and they haven't lived in this city enough to remember when you can go downtown to a club, and after you leave a club, you will go into Chinatown and go eat, because you're half drunk, when you can actually shop in this city, but those things are boarded up now, when people can actually have a good time. These are the people now who are trying to speak and represent what's supposed to be the best for Philadelphia. So, again, while we sit here and pontificate and talk about what does the future hold, we must ask ourselves, when we play the what-if game, but we're using our imaginations, what if the 38% of blacks turn into 20% in 2031? We talk about affordable housing, what if, or what happens when black folks can't already afford to live in majority of the parts of the city anyway? We talk about how, we talk about how one small pocket of the city helps drive the economy of a city, and how they have 150 years of building such an economy for themselves, well, let's talk about off the backs of whom that helped build that economy for those people. In my community, no, it was, listen, it was a fairy tale to say a black man could own a business, why? Because everybody who owned the business did not look like him. Yes, our hair stores, our laundromats, our, our corner stores, the delis, that liquor stores are being sold in and out of right now. None of those stores, and that were all cash businesses, so while we talk about tax revenue, we talk about what the schools look like, we talk about opportunity, we talk about breaks, we talk about fairness, man, that chicken wing platter was $6, you better not bring $5.85. So, again, when we speak on these things, I haven't heard, in fact, I'm sorry, Council President, I heard one, I haven't heard young black brothers come up in the conversations of fairness. And these brothers are tired of being last. These brothers are tired of, only time we speak about them is when it comes in a form of criminology, and it talks about people being safe. Every young black man that's here, right, and there's 45 of them, there's more, and there's 135 in the last 18 months, I've turned into entrepreneurs, they're small business owners, they all employed. These brothers went back, got GEDs, I done paid for CDL classes, these are things I did with no city money, by the way, which is why I talk the way I talk. So, when we talk about the what-ifs, I built entrepreneurial incubators that people talk about, and they would suggest this should happen off the forms of somebody's private money that nobody ever put in our communities. So, when we start talking about this stuff, y'all, it is very, very draining, and it's a damn shame, because much like we saw throughout the presidential campaign, at some point, what, the 25th hour, young black men gonna be considered? We gentrified the barbershop, had a bunch of conversations, and many people ain't gonna touch that barbershop again in another four years. These young black men are tired of being ignored, and I'm tired of them being ignored. I lay my life down for them, and they know that. I lay it all down on the line for them, and they know that. So, again, I'm pro-opportunity. This is beyond an arena. Again, if people sit here and suggest that, hey, we turn around a $1.5 billion opportunity, guess what? Exclusivity gets to continue to exist between 8th and 12th or 13th Street, and guess what? The young black men just gonna have to figure it out. Build jails, build more police, and do what y'all need to do, figure it out, because that's what this sounds like right now. I'm not hearing a lot of innovation about what people plan to do, or how they gonna get other billionaires to bring in $1.5 billion project, but we just playing a bunch of what-ifs. And guess what? How many black men we gonna lose to death in the next damn five years if we play that game? In the next six months, in the next year? How many? But I get it, we gonna stand at the candlelight visual, cameras gonna come out, people gonna pretend to care, I'll deal with the families, I'm gonna help squash the beefs, but guess what? We gonna move on, and we gonna do victory laps, because we only had 250 young black lives lost by the end of this year. So, y'all, we gotta stop playing these games. I'm not hearing nobody talking about what, what's next. I done met folks in Chinatown, I done spoke with WWE, I done sat and had breakfast with Kenny Chu, and I sat there, and I say it, and I say it on record, because my name and my reputation on this, I told them, if them people don't carry out what they supposed to, referencing the Sixers, guess what? I stand on that other side, I raise hell with y'all outside, all day long, we can go ahead and protest the construction workers all day if they not carrying it. But my question was, and my question still remains, to anybody in here that's super anti-Arena, if this thing don't go through, who else offering my people jobs? Who else offering my people union positions? Who else offering my people everything else that got to come with this? We go back to being poor. I'm done, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Pastor Carl Day. To Reverend Felton, leader of the Black Clergy, the floor is yours, sir. Thank you always for your leadership as well.
Thank you so much, our honorable and esteemed president, Philadelphia City Council, Kenyatta Johnson, and to all the members of the council. Bishop J. Lewis Felton, president of Black Clergy of Philadelphia in Vicinity, which is headquartered at Mount Airy Church of God in Christ, 6401 Ogontz Avenue, Philadelphia, 19126. I certainly want to commend our brother, thank you for your remarks. Black Clergy was one of the first organizations to stand with the 76ers in support of 76ers Place, the building of this new arena. My predecessor, who was president of Black Clergy for the previous four years, signed a memorandum of agreement with the 76ers in support of the building of this arena, Pastor Caria. And I am the president of Black Clergy now, and I'm going to continue our support for you. We made a commitment in good faith, we would not dare snatch the rug out from under you after having made that solemn commitment. I do want to echo the sentiments that were expressed previously, that there may be some passion, even anger, in opposition to this project. Anger is very high-octane fuel, but it gets very low mileage. If you do not support the project, what is your alternative for keeping our downtown vibrant and attractive? Today, when my wife and I came downtown to support this project, we parked the 13th Street parking garage across from the Marriott, we had to park on the seventh floor, and we were expecting to ride the elevator down to the ground floor, but the elevator's out of service, so we had to walk seven flights of stairs to the ground floor. Our downtown is already seriously threatened and challenged. It's time for us to take critical measures to rejuvenate our downtown. And I wish it could happen immediately, but at least we can come together and plan ahead for the future of our city. Yesterday, I hosted the Religious Leaders Council, which is an interfaith body of leaders in the city of Philadelphia at Mount Airy. I sat right next to a pastor whose name is Charles Shin, leader of the Gospel Church in Chinatown. And so, I asked him, inasmuch as we were sitting next to each other, how does this affect your congregation in Chinatown? And he said, well, I, I can't say anything negative about it. He's a young pastor with four children, he commutes to his congregation, as do many of his people, and so, anything that can benefit the downtown or bring revenue, jobs, opportunities to this community benefits Chinatown. Let's understand that Chinatown is not an island, it's interconnected with the rest of the citizens of Philadelphia. No one is an island, we are all interwoven in this fabric of unity, and what helps us will help each other. And so, we, as the Black Clergy, stand firm in our support of a city that has a vision for the future. This is not just for seven or eight years from now, we're looking at 50 years, 75 years, our grandchildren, great-grandchildren, they will want to know, what did we do to invest in the future for our city? You know, as I drive around North Philadelphia and other communities in the city, I see numbers of abandoned buildings, factories, just standing there, been standing there for years. I wish I could break off a piece of this investment and tear down every abandoned factory and building in North Philadelphia that our children have to walk past on their way to school every day. I believe that if we can invest in downtown, eventually, we're going to invest in the beautiful possibilities of North Philadelphia, revitalize one of the strongest areas of this city as we move forward together. Thank you, President Johnson.
Thank you very much. Pastor Lonnie Herndon.
Good afternoon, Council President. Thank you for this opportunity, and members of council, my own councilperson, Jamie Gardier, thank you so much for this privilege. My name is Pastor Lonnie Herndon, and I'm here to express my support for the 76ers Place Arena, the legislation that is being put forth by City Council, and our colleagues who have spoke today. I wholeheartedly support the development of the new Sixers Arena and the economic opportunities and the initiatives that it's going to bring to our city. I believe that it will help to reshape the economic landscape of our city, as well as provide tangible benefits to communities that have long been underserved and overlooked. I listened at the meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I've been attending the meetings, I listened at the meeting over at the Convention Center, and the meetings that have been taking place over the last couple of weeks. And I really believe that the Economic Opportunity Plan, and most of all, the Community Benefits Agreement, as I heard about it and what it would provide for our city, I was convinced that this development is not just about building an arena or building a building, but it's about building a lasting economic empowerment for minority communities and for the great city of Philadelphia. I'm excited about the arena when I hear about the fact that 40% of the construction jobs and business opportunities will be set aside for minority workers. This level of commitment to minority participation is unprecedented in large-scale projects, and it starts as a powerful start of inclusivity. I believe the economic impact of this arena will be far-reaching when I hear about a program and initiatives like the City College for Municipal Employment, or the opportunity it will provide for students at HBCUs like Cheney and Lincoln University. In conclusion, as a die-hard Sixers fan, even with the record right now of 211, I am all in on the 76ers Arena. I, I want to go on record saying I support the building of this arena, and I, I'm here representing, I'm here representing, besides the great Enon Church, probably the largest African-American congregation in the city of Philadelphia, other than Enon. And I know our members and our congregation is behind this project. I really do believe that it provides the economic opportunity that our city needs to transform what Pastor Carl talked about, that Center City District, which is a ghost town, which is a desert. By embracing this project, we're embracing a more inclusive and equitable future, one where people, regardless of background, have a chance to succeed and thrive. This is a project worthy of our support. I encourage all elected officials, each and every community member and faith leader to unite behind it, as it represents a positive change that will benefit generations to come. Thank you again for having us.
Thank you very much.
My name is Pastor Jonathan Mason, and Council President Johnson, I want to thank you for giving us this opportunity. I don't know about the placement of four pastors at the end of the day, but, but, but we are here nonetheless, and we, we, I've come to offer my support for the building of this 76ers Place. I've had a unique opportunity to talk to most of the members of this council. I serve as the owner of the last surviving black gospel radio station in Philadelphia, and I've had the opportunity to talk to Councilwoman Landau, Councilwoman Gardier, to my sorority sister, Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson, this past weekend, the council member, O'Rourke. And, and I want everybody in here to know, this is an historic council. This council has approved legislation like the ban on rental price fixing. This council has established, Councilwoman Gardier, a task force on reparations. This council has made permanent the eviction, the eviction diversion program. This council has made history, and you now stand on the precipice of making more history with the 76ers Place. Let, let me tell you why, let me tell you why. Because when I think about a project like this, the question I ask is what's in it for the young people? I'm like, I'm like Pastor Dale over here, I never met you before, but we gonna get real close. I'm, I'm about what's in it for the young people. I'm not about basketball, because I outgrew basketball a long time ago, but I'm about beyond basketball. And when I look at this, I, I, I serve with the concerned faith leaders in the 15th District, and every month, we march. We march at the location determined by Captain Newsom, based on where the last shooting took place. And we march to pray that violence will leave our community. And we do it with 30 to 40 pastors and congregation members every month. I'm in Frankfurt, I'm sick of little caskets, I'm sick of hearing police sirens as the norm and gun shooting, it doesn't scare anybody anymore, because they hear it so often. So, when I look at this project, Council President, I look at what's in it for the young people. And what I see are internships, what I see is support for rec. centers, what I see is extended day and year programs, what I see is youth basketball, what I see is a $4.5 million investment in the Community College for Municipal Employees. I serve as a board trustee for the CCP. You gave them a historic $5 million this year that was sorely needed. This is a historic council. But now, what we gotta do is we gotta wrap our arms... But now, what we got to do is we got to wrap our arms around Chinatown. They're hurting right now, and we can't ignore that. And we've got to understand their concerns, but we also have to help them understand that no project is not the answer. And we have to move forward as a unified body to address the concerns and make sure that this project becomes a reality for Philadelphia. Council, make history again. God bless you.
That's why we see the best for last, Pastor Mason. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning, or rather, good evening, President Johnson and members of the City Council. My name is Pastor William James Scott III, and I am the senior pastor of the House of Faith Baptist Church located in the Logan area. I also serve as the vice-moderator-at-large for the Pennsylvania Eastern Keystone Baptist Association, representing over 100 Baptist churches across Philadelphia. Today, I am here to express my support for the Seventy-Six Place and the legislation before you. Our congregation at House of Faith, formerly Harold Davis Memorial Baptist Church, has been rooted in the Logan community for over 50 years. Our church sits on the edge of the Logan Triangle at 10th and Roosevelt Boulevard. What was once 40 acres of land filled with houses and families is now empty with no development, a problem that has persisted for decades. I've witnessed firsthand the devastation of homes sinking into the ground to poor infrastructure, including my grandmother's home. People often wonder why the church didn't sink along with other houses. When they tested our site, they found out that our building was built on a firm foundation. And I am reminded of the old Christian hymn that declares, "On Christ the solid rock I stand; all of the ground is sinking sin." Our church stood firm because it was built on a strong foundation. And today, I believe we are called to rebuild and restore, to create opportunities for economic growth and to provide homes for communities like Logan. I urge this council to take bold action to support this project and others like it. I support Seventy-Six Place because it keeps the Sixers in Philadelphia, fostering city pride and avoiding economic losses to neighboring states. It will create jobs, providing opportunities for our young people to work, learn discipline, and still have time to focus on school. It will uplift small businesses, allow them to grow, apply for vendor programs, and thrive in a more vibrant economy. It will unite us, promoting a vision of One Philly, a city that prioritizes inclusivity and shared progress. This project is not just about basketball or entertainment. It's about building a foundation for a stronger and more united city. By saying yes to this legislation, you are sending a clear message that Philadelphia is committed to growth, opportunity, and innovation. I stand in faith, hoping that one day, similar development will come to my neighborhood in Logan. But today, I ask you to take this step for our city, for our youth, and for our future. As our mayor says, "One Philly, a united city."
Good afternoon, Council President Johnson and members of the City Council. My name is Reverend Eric Jadeline Good, and I am the senior pastor of the Peoples Baptist Church in southwest Philadelphia, where I have served faithfully for the past 10 years. Our church, which just celebrated 107 years, has a proud history of investing in our community through initiatives such as our feeding program and after-school program, which serves local youth in partnership with Ava Farms. Additionally, I have the privilege of serving as the moderator of the Pennsylvania Eastern Keystone Baptist Association, where we work to support Baptist churches across the city of Philadelphia through collaboration and resource sharing. I am here today to express my full support for Seventy-Six Place and the accompanying legislation before City Council. Not only do I believe this plan represents an important step towards economic growth, but I am also convinced that it will reinvest in our communities by providing much-needed employment opportunities. Furthermore, I am encouraged by the potential for this project to bring us together as a city as our mayor, Sherrell Parker, desires, by fostering a sense of unity and shared purpose. Truly, we are better together. Let's build for a brighter and better Philadelphia. I leave you with the powerful words of the presiding bishop emeritus of the Church of God in Christ, Bishop Charles E. Blake. I see you in the future, and you look much better than you do right now. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I urge you to support this important initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips.
Well, listen, I grew up in the Baptist tradition, so it's always good to hear from our pastors. I just want to hear real quickly, you know, there's this conversation that 80% of folks oppose, and I don't know where this is coming from at the time, but the reality is that what are you hearing among your congregations about the arena, predominantly African-American congregations, about the arena? And thank you all for your revery messages. Thank you.
Well, thank you for asking that. I do believe that at times it's necessary for you to hear directly from the people in the community. You know, some years ago, in 1995, I attended the Million Man March in Washington, D.C. I was living in Michigan at the time. And the reason why I wanted to attend that march in person is because I didn't want the so-called mainline media to tell me what we as Black men were doing. And there are times when you need to allow our churches, people that actually serve congregations, people who have boots on the ground, we're the ones who are the voice of the community. And our people want progress. They want our downtown to live. I heard someone speaking earlier about Detroit coming back. I moved here from Michigan, been pastoring Mount Airy for 15 years. Downtown Detroit literally died, but had to be resurrected. And when that happened, it was blamed upon a lack of vision, reinvestment, consensus building between city and suburbs for the future of that city. That same scenario happened in Gary, Indiana, East Chicago, East St. Louis, Missouri. There are a number of cities across this country where downtown has died because of a lack of vision of leadership. And so I want to commend our council president and our mayor for saying that Philadelphia is a world-class city and deserves a world-class downtown, and this is a world-class effort at reviving our great city, the birthplace of America, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. Thank you for asking.
I want to thank all of you for your testimony, and thank you for representing your congregations that you represent and being here today. Thank you very much. Mr. Christmas, will you please call the last panel?
Hi. Thanks for staying so late.
Absolutely. It's the people's business.
My name is Eugenia Olinova. I'm a legal writer in immigration law, and I'm a PhD candidate at the University of Pennsylvania, and I live in Chinatown. I've been studying the traffic impact analysis provided by JMT since it first came out. The JMT independent analysis is neither independent nor serious and can't tell us what to expect. It replicates bad data from the Sixers-funded Langen study with minor revisions and perpetuates misleading assumptions from that first study, such as the idea that NYC arenas are in any way comparable to Philadelphia, and then uses three sites from New York, where only 45% of people own cars, to lower the car use averages artificially. Their final average is based on arbitrarily constrained data that excludes all football, baseball, and soccer events, whereas the average across all comparison sites was actually 60% car use, not 37. JMT admits that anything above 40% will cause gridlock. And even though the best predictor of future behavior is past behavior, JMT and Langen both deliberately avoided averaging in current Wells Fargo driving habits, which are currently at 85%. It was only by cherry-picking data points that JMT and Langen arrived at their wildly optimistic projections. They used taxi data from before Rideshare was invented in 2013. JMT postpones analysis of I-676 and its intersections with I-95 and I-76, which is shocking for a traffic study, and it doesn't study commuter hours. It only looked at post-events, late Friday night is the only time they studied. They don't have any data for us on commuter impacts at all, and they didn't study what would happen if we had the Convention Center events going on at the same time. These are really crucial answers you would want from traffic research. Moreover, as we heard today, the whole plan depends on SEPTA, which is a severely struggling public transit system intended to serve the needs of city residents who have to get to work, school, et cetera. And we already heard that they would have to eradicate service elsewhere to promote this project. Who would pay for the additional train service for suburbanite fans? Seventy-Six Devco won't even commit to bundling SEPTA passes with their tickets. Other teams do this. They're not committing to that. There is no reason, given all this, to believe that car use among fans will drop by what they're expecting, 40 to 50%, and bus and train ridership will skyrocket by 150 to 300%. And because there's no guarantee that car users will switch to SEPTA or that SEPTA will be able to accommodate them, the current parking and traffic estimates are completely unreliable. There is no plan. Even if average car use did drop to the Langen projections, the fine print of the JMT study says gridlock will still be a frequent occurrence. No resident or business in Center City will avoid the impact of this plan. When this concept of a plan fails, the result will be severe gridlock with impact on everyone, including emergency services. It is hard to imagine that people would want to come to Center City for any other activity on nights with Seventy-Six Place events, if this is what's happening. The likelihood of reduced economic vitality as a result and quality of life in all of Center City is far greater than Seventy-Six Place admits. Seventy-Six Place is a potential catastrophe with negative impacts that would reverberate throughout all of Philadelphia and be felt largely by the vulnerable populations least equipped to absorb them. And traffic impact is small business impact. Thank you.
Pastor Holston, good to see you again. It was twice in one week hanging out this weekend.
Yes, glad to see you as well. My name is Reverend Gregory Holston, and I have been involved in a lot of organizations, Black Clergy of Philadelphia, the NAACP, which both support this stadium. Former executive director of Power and part of Black Philly for Chinatown, which are against this stadium. And so I'm here today really speaking for myself and my opposition for this stadium. So much of it is about the fact that Chinatown itself has said very clearly, very distinctly, they do not want this project. Why does that mean so much to me, a Black person in Philadelphia? Too many emotions almost to speak. I was a child when my father took me around the Black Bottom and the rich culture that was of that community, the gospel singers that was there that my father knew, and how that community did not have the opportunity to have a voice in its own future, when eminent domain was done by the city and taken that Black Bottom, least parts of it away, that now has become university city. Fast forward to 2000, and the Avenue of the Arts and the Martin Luther King Towers were destroyed, but people don't remember. About 100 homes were also destroyed during that time period. Black homeowners had their properties taken from them against their will. If they had an opportunity to say no, they said no, and nobody cared. Nobody gave a damn. I was a young clergy person at Tinley Temple at that time, just moving into United Methodist Church, and I cried with those people as they saw the small amount of money that was given to them to be forgotten and pushed aside. And every time I go past Tinley now and I look across the street and I see those million-dollar condos, I think about those Black people. Because when Black leadership, when Black political leadership was fought for in a city, it was fought for with the mindset that Black leaders would do something different when it came to the needs of the community. When the community spoke and said they didn't want something, somebody would have been here to listen to them. That's what all of this organizing has been about, making sure the voice of the voiceless are heard, and in my case, the least of these. When I stood with Temple and the folk here in North Philadelphia who fought against that stadium, because they really wanted to put a stadium 50 feet from their homes, and nobody cared. And then, so let's be clear about it, a multiracial group of folk called the Stadium Stompers, combined with those Black local leaders in that area, tried to give voice to, "How dare you put a stadium in my area when I'm saying I don't want it?" And we fought. And they told us then, "You're not going to win. Don't worry, and don't even ask the Black clergy to come along." I'm not saying Black clergy of Philadelphia, but Black clergy in the area did come and stand with them. And we fought that off, because the community did not want it. The community said, "No." So I'm fast forward almost 40 years of this fight, whether it's the refinery in South Philly that wanted to expand and continue to dump poisons onto my people in South Philadelphia. And we stood together and said, "No." People like Philly Thrive and other groups stood with the community and said, "No, you cannot expand. In fact, you got to close." And they told us about the economic opportunities. They told us about the $100,000 jobs. They told us about all these things that we're going to give, but we say, "It doesn't matter if we can't live." We found out, South Philly, my home, your home, Council President, we found out through the white folk who came to organize, how many cancer deaths happened because that plant was there. We wouldn't have known that unless they came and organized, and we had to help give us voice to stop that expansion and to close that refinery. So I'm here today, not because I love Chinatown so much. I don't go to Chinatown that often. I'm not here because... I'm not here because something was given to me because I haven't been given anything. I'm only here because they're crying the same cry that I've been crying for 40 years in this city about the need to listen to those who are impacted. You cannot have a community benefit agreement without the impacted people agreeing to it. That does not work. And we're crying out, "Why? Why we didn't get more Philly voters out?" I'm telling you why, because they don't believe in democracy, because they don't believe that they're listened to. Because when they reach out and speak up and sass to be listened to, they are ignored or the billionaire class seems to have more power than the people really do. So I'm feeling everything my black pastor's friends were just saying. I know what they're feeling, but they're looking to the billionaires to solve this problem. The billionaires will never solve the economic problems of the least of these in this city. They will never do it. Only when the people rise up together, only when the people decide to make change, only when the people say, "We're going to use the resources that we have to build our communities." Don't ever look for building downtown to be able to change around the neighborhoods. That didn't happen in the '90s. That didn't happen with the Avenue of the Arts. That didn't happen with the gallery. That didn't happen with any development downtown. Always the promise is made over and over. If we build downtown, we'll come up to the neighborhoods sooner or later. It has never happened. It only happened when the people start to make it happen. I still see them faces. I still see the deacons in the Church of Redeemer Baptist who died of cancers that we didn't know what they were dying of. I still see a good friend, the wife of one of those deacons that lived right down the street from me and her incredible gray hair. And I watched her deteriorate from those cancers in that neighborhood because we didn't listen to the cry of the people. And as long as I keep seeing these faces, and I now see the faces of those in Chinatown who have their properties, who have their restaurants, who have had their businesses, who've lived there for 150 years, generation after generation, and have suffered so much. We've already taken Chinatown. We already took Vine Street. We already put the Vine Street Expressway in. We put the convention center in. We put the federal jail, a prison, and we've already surrounded them. Now we want to finish the job by closing them down completely? It is unfair. It is unjust. 50% of the businesses are going to suffer negatively. It is unfair. It is unjust. And we must not do it. And we must come together to find another way to revive that area that can make sure that Chinatown lives, makes for the black folk that Pastor Carl Day was talking about, get the jobs that they need, and make sure that we have the opportunities for everyone to grow. This is not a, "Somebody has to suffer, so if somebody else has to live." We have the resources in this town for everybody to have enough. We all have enough, and all of you have to make that choice to say, "No, we're not going to hurt somebody else so somebody else can prosper." Thank you so much.
Thank you, Pastor Holston.
Okay. Yeah, I'm overcome too. I appreciate the love. I think the solidarity, the love, I feel it. Yeah, my name is Zevian Chang with the No Arena in the Heart of Our City Coalition. Want to close this out by just summing up what you've heard today, right? Like, this is the heart of it and also the facts of it. This arena is a bad deal for the city, period. No, like, bones about it, right? It's $400 million in property taxes, $560 million lost in use and occupancy taxes. Those are huge ass numbers. We're talking about piddling amounts for our kids, right? In this CBA, they're offering, what, $7 million for kids over 30 years? That's basically $1.50 per student. So thanks for the pack of gum, David Adelman, Josh Harris. And you know what we've been calling it behind closed doors instead of CBA? It's BBA, Billionaires Benefit Agreement. Okay, these benefits only go to them because, you know, they've cut out the money for rec centers. They cut out the money for small business. You know, Councilman Schooler said he built in an arena district. Well, that money came out of the same $50 million that was offered two years ago. Okay, there's not a single dollar more that has been offered that has been, you know, parlayed for this city. So what does negotiation really look like, right? What is the city actually doing to get more or anything out of these corporate developers? The answer is nothing, right? We can't afford this. Our city can't afford this. Our schools, like, the district is about to close schools again. We all went through the trauma 10 years ago, right, when the district closed schools. And now we're going to do it again. You know, 14,000 municipal workers are ready to strike. And again, we want to take tax revenue out of the city instead of putting it in. We've heard all day that SEPTA is in a crisis, a death spiral, as the headlines say. And workers are ready to strike because they are fed up. They've been stepped on, and we're going to let these billionaires who've already stepped on them do it again? Right? None of this makes sense, and none of this is what Philly's really about. And you know, I think there was discussion around, "Oh, like, the Sixers are offering this stuff." Well, like I said, this is what they offered two years ago, right? They had their shot. They've been supposedly talking to folks, but it was too little too late. You know, in 2022, they ran out of a meeting in Chinatown. Like, they were so, they treated our people so disgustingly, they couldn't even face them, right? We had a meeting in Chinatown with folks. We invited the Sixers, and they left at the back door. How was that respect? That was it, right? That's the lastest community scene of supposedly this good neighbor, right? So it's just, it's too little too late, right? They offer the same amount, and not a single dollar more has ever moved out of this, right? You all heard last week too. You all, straight from their mouths. They're like, "We're not going to give you more money." The mayor administration, like, they don't want to negotiate for more money either. So what are we doing, right? David Adelman, David Blitzer, Josh Harris, they have us all begging for crumbs. Like, literally crumbs. I'm like, "Oh, okay, cool. Yeah, $1.50 per student. That's, that's cool." What are they going to do with that when their roof is flooding? When there's no AC? When they have asbestos in the walls? These schools are 75 years old. And like, we want to give them a shiny new arena, take that tax money out of our schools, out of SEPTA, into their pockets. So I mean, I think, just to sum up, I see Council President, you're like, "It's a long day. We've all been here. I appreciate it." But you know, it's shameful what we're considering here, right? What the city and country have done to minority communities, to people of color in so many different places. Yeah, that's right. I mean, Chinatown's across the country. That's one. But like, you know, cities, Miami, destroyed, black and brown communities destroyed by a highway. So many cities across the country. Pittsburgh, right? There's like, you could name, I was like, for every one city we can name, there are 10 more where their governments decided to destroy communities of color for some kind of profit, for something that was a big promise that was never, ever going to materialize. So now we're 2024. Are we going to do the same thing again? I hope not. Our liberation is tied together, right? Union world, we talk about this. Injury to one is injury to all. You all heard, I come from a union family. My mom's a state worker, right? I'm like, "This municipal worker's strike is very close to my heart." And like, you know, these are the people who are literally holding our city together. And like, they are, this real solidarity looks like not destroying community, not stealing money out of the workers' pockets, and not giving up, rolling over for billionaires who don't even live here, who don't even root for our teams because they can't make them win. Like, they just, they don't care about our city. So please, don't give up our city for these people who don't care about us.
I want to thank all of you for your testimony. Any questions or comments from members of the committee? I'm hearing none. Well, thank you for your very informative and most importantly, passionate testimony. At this, we're working today. So we have members of the public who would like to give testimony through public comment. Okay, so what we will do is we will allow members to give public comment. I would like to say, if it's repetitive, right? Could you summarize and work together and give your public comment? But I know that you've stayed here all day, so we want to give you an opportunity to say how you feel on this very, very passionate issue. So we would like to call up Gordon Whitman, Queen Judith Robinson, Constance Billy, and Rebecca Harris.
I live in Bella Vista in the second ward. And like everyone I know and everyone I've talked to who doesn't have a direct stake, I oppose this strongly. This is the most important vote you will take as a councilperson. Your constituents oppose it for all the reasons you've heard. Today watching was brutal. Everything the Sixers want is nailed down in writing. Everything the community needs, and not just Chinatown and Wash West, but every Philadelphian who rides SEPTA is still up in the air. You cannot vote for this until you answer the basic questions. What happens to SEPTA? We have Hunger Games between gridlock and people who ride SEPTA to get to work. You cannot vote until you know where that money is. And we have a system that is already in what's called a death spiral. Two, the gridlock question is real. Three, there's no analysis of what happens to Philadelphia during the six years. Six years it takes to build this thing. And four, we do not have an independent analysis. We have the Sixers and Comcast with competing views on the economics of this thing. You have to do your own analysis. It's your responsibility. And fundamentally, as Reverend Holstein said, you do not have an answer to the City Planning Commission's analysis that this will destroy Chinatown. And you can go to Washington DC and you can see Chinatown having been destroyed. This will be on you when you vote, when you run for reelection. And just want to highlight that we are headed into four years of hell where we need to be united as a city. The controversy over this will not go away. You need to put aside this need that the Sixers have and focus on the real problems we have as a city and preparing for Trump. Thank you.
Thank you. Constance Billy, Rebecca Harris, Rhonda Peskin.
My name is Deb Gausman, so there you go.
One second, Deb.
All right. I'm way back on the list, but a lot of people left because it's a long day.
Go ahead, Deb.
All right, thank you. My name is Deb Gausman. I'm a retired registered nurse. I went to nursing school at Albert Einstein that doesn't exist anymore, our nursing school there up at Broad and Alney. I live in Mount Airy. Cindy Bass is my city councilperson. When friends in Pittsburgh asked me five years ago, where I was living at the time, why we were moving back to Philly, I told them that it's a democratic, community-driven, neighborhood-based, wonderful multicultural city, and we'd missed it for the 30 years we were away. And then I came back, and I was surprised to find what was going on in Germantown and Mount Airy, just as an example. A place that had been a thriving multicultural neighborhood was beginning to be more and more developed. Big buildings taking over what had been neighborhood streets. High-priced condos replacing high schools. I don't see how development in this part of the city is going to do anything other than do what it's doing to all the other neighborhoods where people are being displaced by gentrification. I see that race is being used as a way to divide up, how this is playing itself out. These jobs are not sustainable. We can get into that. What's going on with SEPTA, we can get into that. What's going on with medical care, we can get into that, if the roads are screwed up. But basically, I'm really concerned about what's happening with the soul of this city. A city that was a really thriving place where everybody wanted to come and try to figure each other out. And now what we're doing is letting billionaires decide how to divide us further and not house more of us.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Constance Bille. I'm a co-founder of Philadelphia Neighborhood Networks, and I'm speaking for them today. We've already gone through lots of testimony about, you know, the pros, people who are pro and people who are con, and all of the problems that this is going to cause. I wanted to, I have experienced, having worked on Market East, I saw the decline over many years of that whole area. But all that time, Chinatown survived, and it thrived, and it adapted. The rest of those things did not. All those big institutions, tear them down. Let Chinatown expand. Why are we, we have already built an infrastructure in South Philadelphia. Why aren't we using it? Why are we imposing extra costs that we're being told that SEPTA has not been funded? We're not hearing that there's a real plan. The Community Benefits Agreement didn't involve the community. We've heard all of that today. What I want to actually mention is the process in which this is being rammed through. It is a well-known process that's documented in a book by a Temple professor called Public Dollars, Private Stadiums. And every single stadium in a center city followed the same thing. A little group of team owners, business leaders, and a few politicians pushed things through. And in every case, you know, they did it quickly and they won. This is a, if this is a take it or leave it deal, leave it. Don't take it. You're being pressured. And city council prerogative, you know, council mandatory is only a tradition. It's not a law. So vote no.
Next up is Rebecca Harris, Rhonda Peskin, Jude Peskin, Diane Payne, Kaia Chow, Martin Byrne, Donna Greenberg, Stan Horowitz, Cassie Hee, Barbara McDowell. Just say your name for the record, ma'am, and begin your testimony.
My name is Diane Payne. I am a lifelong Democratic voter, resident of Northeast Philadelphia, a member of 215 People's Alliance, and I stand against all resolutions that pave the way for a center-city arena. Philadelphia is fortunate to have a vibrant Chinatown who has fought hard to exist and will suffer the consequences of this mega invader. What does the trouncing of Democrats in this past election and city council's arena agenda have in common? In my opinion, what they have in common is, one, the glaring failure of the Democratic Party to meet the needs and concerns of its constituents. This arena project is Exhibit One. You are pushing through an arena with little or no public, as in the people's support. the people's support. But our Democratic leaders are in rooms negotiating and deal-making with business in corporate suits, folks who don't even live in Philadelphia. Then you come here and pretend to ask tough questions about taxpayer support and community benefits. We all know, once the deal is brokered, the promises can be broken. Not to mention that relying on the wealthy to provide community benefits is more of failed Democratic neoliberal policies. Philadelphia's problems are many: addiction, poverty, housing, trash, schools, gun violence. But what are we debating? An arena, which will fix or impact none of those problems. Our Democratic Party is broken, and what is happening in this room is broken. Dumping an arena in the middle of our city has echoes of a crumbling Roman Empire. Democrats crumbled in this election because they are more concerned with courting big donors, catering to the rich and powerful, guarding their legacy power structures, and buying into failed neoliberal policies. Look in the mirror.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Cassie He. I'm here with the Save Chinatown Solidarity Network, where an AAPI-led grassroots collective of DC residents fighting the ongoing threats of displacement and gentrification in DC Chinatown. I wanted to start and just ask if anyone here has been to DC and has visited DC's Chinatown. I'm getting some nods. And if you've been there, you would know that it's dying. And the cause of death of DC's Chinatown is the development of Capital One Arena. What was, what was once a community of thousands is now 300 people and only 15 Asian-owned small businesses. Think about that. There's 15 small businesses left in DC Chinatown. For the city, the area is not a driver of businesses or jobs. Rather, it's an economic dead zone with very, with a lot of vacant units, very little foot traffic, and chain restaurants that don't drive any business. We know from experience, DC China knows from experience, that all the promises that were being made today about economic opportunity are empty. From Sue Ailey, the owner of a hair salon in Chinatown, she tells us that Chinatown DC is dying because we let them develop, and that businesses are closing because the rent is too high. From Ming Chan, the tenant association president of one of the only two affordable housing units left in DC Chinatown, the loss of retail due to the development is hurting Chinatown's economy. An authentic local economy must be rooted in a strong local community and promote culture and identity. How can Chinatown remain a cultural icon if we don't work to retain Chinese-American businesses and residents? From Katuya T. Fukushima, the executive chef of the high-end restaurant, high-end ramen shop, Dai Kya, DC Chinatown is one of the most embarrassing Chinatowns in the US, and that's because of the development of the Capital One Arena. So let DC Chinatown be a warning to everybody in this room today, a warning about what happens to a neighborhood when you let developers build and displace families, a warning to what happens to businesses when they get pushed out and entire blocks lose their characters, and most importantly, a warning about how communities will continue to fight. And I guarantee you, if you build this arena, every single one of us here will become only a bigger pain in your side. So when communities are under attack, we're going to keep fighting.
Good afternoon. My name is Barbara McDowell-Dowdell. I'm a retired Philly public school teacher who treasures the time I have now to enjoy the restaurants, gift shops, and varieties of other businesses, and intergenerational family life in Chinatown by simply walking around the unique community. As a union member, I understand the concerns of the building trade unions. As a power-interfaith education justice team member, I appreciate the advocacy of clergy. As a grand and godparent of four Philadelphia public school students, one of whom is rarely seen without a 76ers hat or hoodie, I yearn to witness the state and city commitment to replacing school buildings as old as 126 years, that's Fiddler in Germantown, and restoring librarians to the 110 schools where they do not exist. And as a resident of southwest Germantown, where just a few years ago, we joined with Nice Town in East Falls to fend off the threat to our community life from another billionaire, now president-elect, who sought to build a casino slots parlor right where our neighborhoods converged. The gambling commission blessedly sided with the communities, and we were delighted to have Baker Square built. I use the shop right there regularly. I have not seen any consideration as yet for the additional destructive ripples from an out-of-place humongous sports arena, Independence Hall, the Liberty Bell Pavilion, and President's House honoring those whom George Washington enslaved. Christ Church, the Ardent Theater, and all the other potential tourist draws for our nation's 250th Declaration of Independence celebration and the Soccer World Cup in 2026. I already, I grew up in southwest Germantown and saw my childhood park cut in half by Route One. The Roosevelt Expressway destroyed the ambience of our neighborhood. And just by mentioning Randolph Career Tech High School, that building was originally an asbestos factory.
Thank you, Ms. McDowell. Anthony Bright, George Newman, Deborah Gausman, Sophia White, Hakeem McCain, Shirley Zundy, no, Shirley Lundey, Mike Morak, Sam Staten Jr., Wick Savage, Linda Thomas, Keisha Hayes, Robert Brand, Mijul Johnson. Come on up, Mijul, and Rose Dillon.
Good afternoon, Council President and Council Members. There was so much said here today. I don't know where to start. But I'm first going to start from my heart. This is the most important decision that I think I'm going to see in my lifetime. I happen to be 71 years old. I have a number amount of great-grandkids that live within walking distances. Some of them live in the Great Councilman's District, Michael Driscoll. They can catch the train and come see his game. Some of them live in my dear friend Cindy Bass's district. And those that live in your district, Council President, probably can walk to the game. There are many communities in the city of Philadelphia that would love to benefit from what the sports district has benefited in the last 20 years. I don't think anyone would question the economic impact that the sports arenas have had on this city of Philadelphia. This is an opportunity for young men, as I was a long time ago, to get involved in the building trades. I am a product of the building trades. I am 100% in support of the 76ers' place as an advocate. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mijul Okay-Johnson-Hudson, and I'm opposed to the 76ers Arena in Chinatown. I'm opposed because, because I feel that, that it is not worth, worth the destruction of another historic community in Philadelphia, Philadelphia, for the creation of a, of what essentially be just a giant bowl in the middle of the city, in the city. We have a sports complex, complex, which is by no means full, means full, if you can take into consideration all the, all the parking lots, parking lots. We can easily build another arena there. I don't think anyone really is opposed to the idea of the Sixers having an arena. We're opposed to where they want to put it. We don't want an arena in Chinatown. We don't want an arena in Center City, especially when there's plenty of space in the sports complex, which is already allocated, heated for that purpose, that purpose. Some of the, some of the, the arguments that, that they've just made, like, for example, the Wells Fargo Center being too old. The Wells Fargo Center is five years younger than I am, and I'm 33, 33. You have people in Pula, Croatia, playing, playing, people in Pula, Croatia, playing World Cup-level soccer matches in 2,000-year-old Roman amphitheaters. But we can't make a 28-year-old arena work, especially one that's already been given, what, $400 million in renovations? That doesn't make any sense, any sense. We want our, as a, as a tour guide, tour guide, I see people come to the city and they are fascinated. They are fascinated. Philadelphians love the history of this city. We're proud to be a world heritage city. But just remember that the status of a world heritage city can be taken away if you overdevelop. And we saw what happened in Liverpool. And we don't want to make that mistake here, a mistake here. I think we should focus, focus development in areas that need, that can actually sustain it, in places that we haven't developed already, headed, places like the Riverfront, places like, like the, okay, places like the sports complex. And just thank you, thank you. And I hope, hope that we can actually build this arena, arena elsewhere, elsewhere, if we need to build it at all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Council President Johnson, Council Members. My name is John Dunhu. I'm a member IBW Local 98. I'm also the ward chairman for the Honorable Michael Driscoll here, 65th Ward. I just want to ask everyone in council to please approve the 76ers Arena Bill. It's jobs for everyone. It's going to bring Chinatown back. It's going to make it even better than it is right now. I'm probably the last speaker for this evening. Walk down 8th Market, 9th Market, 10th Market, right now. There's nothing there. We're going to light it up like a Christmas tree and create more jobs for the entire city of Philadelphia, for everyone. So please approve the 76ers Arena. As I say every time I'm here, build it, build it, build it. Thank you.
Is anyone else here for a public comment? Come on, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Sophie White. I am a Democratic Committee person for the First Division of the 18th Ward. I am also a member of the Philadelphia Tenants Union. I'm a trade worker. I'm an artist, and I'm also a patient at Jefferson Hospital. Thank you, everyone, for giving me the time to be here. I'm just going to speak really quickly. There's so many things I have to say, so it's difficult to keep it into two minutes. But Chinatown is not a nowhere. Chinatown is a vital and important part of the city. I was essentially gentrified out of New York when I moved here in the year 2008 during the recession. And Chinatown was a crucial part of my ability to navigate Philadelphia. It's very friendly and urban. Many, many local businesses are interconnected, and it has a very safe and welcoming vibe for any kind of people who come here, whether it's my weird relatives from Ohio, or, you know, everybody who lives in Philadelphia, whether you live in South Philly or West Philly. Weird. Okay, Republicans, I guess. Full disclosure. They felt comfortable there. I feel comfortable there. And anybody can feel comfortable there. It's a place for anyone. It's someplace where you can afford any kind of delicious food that you want to eat. You can get your friends back home. If you're a tourist, you can get gifts there that you can afford. If you are a Philadelphian, you can get gifts there or, or things that you might need that you can afford. The hardware store on 10th Street is one of the most essential stores that I visit most regularly in the entire city. And I don't live in Chinatown. I live in Fishtown. Fishtown has seen a whole lot of development, and it has come at the expense of local residents, be it renters or even property owners whose taxes have gone up while developers have not had to pay taxes. Many adjacent properties have been knocked down by developers. As an artist, I make paintings of these types of situations taking place where neighborhoods are changing into something that you cannot recognize anymore, something familiar that goes away. As I stood in Chinatown painting recently, I have seen and heard, sorry, so many different languages, people of every age, people of every background, coming together just the way Philadelphia wants to be.
Thank you.
Good evening to City Council. My name is Shirley Zenobia Lundey. I'm a lifelong Philadelphian. I've been a block captain forever. I'm a product of the Philadelphia High School for Girls. And it's not really necessary for me to tell you who I am. I'm a Philadelphian. I am Philadelphian. And I'm here to support Chinatown. Because, believe it, if it can happen there, it can happen anywhere. And I beg you, City Council, vote against this. You've driven downtown. You see how the traffic is. I'll tell you this, I did not drive. I have a car. I came on public transportation. I am fearful to go home. Let's invest some money in making our streets safer, not an arena. Okay, the trash, 3,200 people are going to come into Philly? All the trash that that's going to generate? Is Philly going to clean that up? I still see Harris signs in West Philadelphia. I live in West Philadelphia. My heart is in Philly. And this reminds me of the Broad Street Run. You saw me holding that sign. I ran the first Broad Street Run, and I will hold that sign up for a week for the residents of Chinatown if I have to. And if you can sleep at night after voting yes on this, no, it's not right. I, I'm going to give a quick analogy. I told my neighbor I was sitting next to. This would be like if you had a 10-year-old kid and they came to you and said, hey, Mom, I think I'm going to go to New York City for the weekend. What do you think? And you say, oh, let me think about it. We shouldn't even be thinking about this. The union workers, they will always work. There will always be something for them to do in Philadelphia. So think about all of this. And this is my first time as City Council, and I learned a lot about how it works. My councilperson didn't even stay. Thank you.
Thank you. This, this concludes, this concludes the business for, the committee of the whole for today. I want to recognize Councilmember Mark Squiller for motion to recess the public hearing on Wednesday, November 20, 2024, at 10:00 AM. So moved. Is there a second? It has a moving property second that the committee of the whole will be recessed to Wednesday, November 20, 2024, at 10:00 AM. All in favor, signify by saying aye, aye. Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries. The committee of the whole stands in recess until Wednesday, November 20, 2024, at 10:00 AM. Thank you all very much.